Senator Ada, Senator Rector, Senator Blas, and Senator Tenorio. I understand Speaker Wampat, as well as Vice Speaker Cruz, and Speaker Ben Panglinen are at their adjoining room, and they will be joining us very shortly. Sergeant Adams, if I can ask you to please invite the representatives of the executive branch forward to join us in the panel, and then also the senators that are in the immediate vicinity. Thank you, Sergeant Adams. And by the way, I appreciate the color of your attire and your staff. Five-minute recess. Good morning, Senators. The Committee of the Hall is now back in session. Our last amendment that was on the floor and being considered was proffered by Speaker Ben Panglinen on Page 5, Line 23, right after the word subcontractors. Or, I'm sorry. The proposed amendment was on Line 22 and 23, to delete the word "or" right after "and", and then to delete the "or" at the end of that sentence, that line, and then to extract its contractors. No, that was Rector's. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. That was Senator Rector's. Speaker Ben was to incorporate right after the phrase "subcontractors," approved by Elisa Turen Guahan. On that amendment... Speaker Panglinen, you have a copy of that? I know it's an incorporation of the words "approved by Elisa Turen Guahan." Line 23. Speaker Panglinen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the amendment I had presented verbally.
Yes, yes.
It was fairly simple. It's contractors, agents, or subcontractors, in which approval to subcontract to contractors, agents, or subcontractors shall be approved by the legislature. So, the idea is that the administration, let's say, wants to...
Can you rephrase that again, Speaker Panglinen? I just want to make sure that I have it.
Yeah. It was kind of a change from the original amendment.
Yes, yes. Senator Rector rescinded his amendment in exchange for entertaining yours, yes.
So, what I... In further discussion with Senator Rector and the body, the original... It would be to add the words, "in which approval to subcontract such contractors, agents, or subcontractors shall be approved by the legislature." So, in other words, rather than the administration going out and contracting with somebody and sending the contract down to the legislature for approval, that the administration will decide from a policy perspective, we want to contract this activity out. And so, they would then have sent a bill down here that would authorize them to contract this activity, and that the legislature will approve the contracting of that activity, to proceed with going out for an RFP, issuing an RFP to contract out that activity. So, it's not at the tail end, it's at the beginning end, which is more fitting from a policy perspective. So, it would read, "It's contractors, agents, or subcontractors, of which such authorization to contractors, agents, or subcontractors shall be approved by the legislature." Remember, Judge, I talked about...
Clerk, do you have that language? Yes. Yes, yes. On Page 5, Line 23. There's been a request to have it prepared in writing.
Mr. Chair, I have a friendly amendment to the amendment.
I'm sorry, because I don't want to initiate this discussion today with any level of confusion. So, Speaker Panglinen, if I can get that in black and white, and then we'll proceed with your discussion. Two-minute recess. Good morning, Senators. The Committee of the Hall is now back in session. Speaker Panglinen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, as you know, my amendment was in response to an earlier amendment that was offered by Senator Rector. And he had continued to work on another amendment after he withdrew his. And in working in that amendment, he has incorporated what I was trying to make with my amendment, and he has it in writing, it's copied, and it's passed out. And I support the amendment, so I will withdraw my amendment, so that we'll just deal with one single amendment which incorporates my concerns.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. Speaker Panglinen has withdrawn his amendment, and in exchange for that, he recognizes Senator Rector, who does have a proposed amendment which has been circulated. Senator Rector, you recognize.
Therefore, I move to amend the previous section N by adding the following lines on Page 6, after Line 2, the following sentence. "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the privatization, partnership, contracting, or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval."
On the proposed amendment by Senator Rector. Senator Rector, did you want to comment on your amendment, please?
I think it's fairly self-explanatory. We just want to make sure that any contracting has an independent analysis, so that the people of Guam know that it's actually going to be good for the people of Guam, and we have an unbiased opinion, an unbiased study, to make sure that the numbers work out, and it's fiscally responsible for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. On the proposed amendment by Senator Rector, any comments or discussion? Senator Roarus Pishu, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I rise in full support of the amendment. I think Senator Rector and Senator Panglinen, Speaker Panglinen, both pointed out to what's been sorely lacking in this quest to resolve the solid waste crisis, and our quest to somehow comply with the consent decree and the judge's orders. In order to make any decision, I believe there must be a cost-benefit analysis, there must be an economic impact study. And I just ran from my office to come in here to make that statement, because that's something that this administration has not done in us moving to select the Legon side. And I would repeat that over and over and over, and I hope our colleagues would support this amendment. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the proposed amendment, Senator Tenorio, you recognize.
I just want to ask a couple of questions. Good morning, everybody. Round three, I suppose, on Bill 51.
You're going to be posing your question to members of the panel?
Give me an opportunity to frame it. The... I want to ask... No, framing means you kind of...
Proceed, Senator Tenorio.
Okay, so let me get straight to the point, then, and I won't frame. Mr. Bamba, Senator Bamba. Going back to what our kind of foundation is, since that's a term that some people appreciate here, is that didn't the court mention something about legislative approval without further legislative approval? Where was that contained in the order? Or was it in the order?
It is in the order, and we also have an opinion from Bond Council with respect to any further legislative action.
Can you tell us what that... Let's go to the order first, and then we'll go legislative... The Bond Council after that. What does the order say, or the ruling, whatever it is that the district court had said with respect to further legislative approval?
Yeah, I'm looking for my order. Give me a minute. No, I haven't. Sorry.
Well, maybe we can have Shannon, if Ms. Luhan has it. Doesn't matter to me, Ms. Chair.
It's actually in the court order under...
Could you speak directly into the mic, so we can hear you?
It's in the court order as, I guess, order number one. And that calls into question the... That it could conflict with the court order itself.
What does the court order say?
The legislature authorizes, without the need for any further legislative authorization or action, the maximum amount of bonds needed for full implementation of the consent decree projects as certified to the court by the Attorney General and government Guam's Bond Council.
Okay. Does that play into this? Because this requires future legislative approval. This deals with definition of terms, and it talks about the system. And the system means the solid waste management system, now or hereafter existing, owned and/or operated by the department or its contractors, agents, or subcontractors, et cetera. And so, does this violate the... That portion of the court order?
Senator Tenorio, just on that note, because there has been additional communication provided by representatives on the administration in reference to any impact of our consideration for this legislation. Let me take a two-minute recess to circulate this and allow our colleagues to be able to review it before we proceed any discussion. It directly relates to the question that you're presenting.
You'll come back to me after this.
Okay. Two-minute recess.
Yeah, the one from Bond Council. No.
Good morning, Senators. The Committee of the Hall is now back in session. We do have Senator Tenorio, who has the floor, and then Speaker Panglinen, Senator Gutters, and Speaker Wampat. Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I just heard the word landmine in the hall here, in being referenced to this email. This email, for the record, for those who are not at the benefit of having it in front of us, is the Bond Council of Oric Public Finance, Abola Brook D... Sorry, Brook D. Abola, an associate. And there's some pretty serious stuff in here, and I don't know if it would be appropriate at this time, but it seems to me that the language here is pretty straightforward with regards to a couple of different issues. But I'm going to go straight to the issue that's before us now.
Senator Tenorio, if I can ask you to... Yes, Speaker Wampat, can you please state your point of order?
Is the individual speaking specifically on the amendment, or a previous amendment?
I was just going to lead to that. Speaker Wampat. Actually, some of his comments were leading towards the language in the order, which referenced the proposed amendment. So, let me allow for the continuance of that particular dialogue. Senator Bamba, if I can... Senator Bombay, if I can also ask you just to briefly describe what was just circulated to the members of the legislature, just so that they, the public would understand exactly what was presented. And then we will proceed, Senator Tenorio.
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was, uh, the email received from, uh, the, um, Oric Harrington and Setcliff, which are the bond councils, uh, uh, who also drafted the legislation that was transmitted down here. Uh, and in conformance with what would, uh, with the court, and looking at the court order and, and then drafting the legislation that would comply with the court order. Uh, I think the concerns that they have, that the bond counsel has, is that, of course, any changes that, in their opinion, uh, would require any return to the legislature would not be acceptable by the court or by the receiver. And this is, uh, and I understand Senator Panglinen's, uh, concern and certainly it's, uh, I have no problem with the body establishing the parameters upon which a RFP can be issued, you know, and then, and will work within those parameters. But then requiring it to come back to the legislature for then, you know, final approval would be, in the bond counsel's opinion, uh, would violate the court order. Uh, and I, you know, and I have, as I had mentioned to Senator Panglinen, and we don't, we wouldn't have a problem with respect to, uh, establishing the parameters in this legislation. Uh, and that's okay, but it would also, uh, if it comes back for legislative approval after the award and selection or the selection of a, after discharge of an RFP, uh, within the parameters established, uh, then, uh, any, and then kind of having to come back to the legislature for approval would not be problematic.
Thank you, Senator Bombay. Thank you for that presentation. Uh, Senator Tenorio, on the amendment, you still have the floor.
Mister, Mister Chairman, it clears to me, to me, based on what I just heard and what I'm reading here from bond counsel, that further legislative approval is not going to be met kindly by the court. And we're just continuing to go down a road where it's going to inflame the situation, it's going to be further delays, it's going to be perceived to be, uh, further roadblocks in going through whether it be the department or it be a subcontractor. These are the measures that need to be undertaken in order to fulfill the order of the court because the government for years has not done so. So now we're gonna say, we're only gonna approve contracts and subcontracts, agents and subagents, and other entities to carry out the functions of this court order if this legislature approves. That's the gist of what this amendment does. And yes, do we wanna make sure that we get it done cost-effectively, there's economic impact studies? Sure. Do we want, because the court has basically said, we don't want to have to worry about further legislative approval, give them the authority, give them the tools to be able to go forward. And we start to go through definition of terms and we define a term called system in saying that nothing with, notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the privatization, partnership, contracting, or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent by Department of Public Works for the operation of this system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval. I just heard, that's not gonna be, that's gonna be very detrimental to what we do. And I don't know about you, but March 1st is right on the horizon. And the quality of life of all of our people at Guam is going to be very much hanging the balance based on what we do in this legislation. And I'm not gonna be party to continuing to chip away at the confidence of the court who's basically said this legislature in many cases has done things contrary to carrying out its edict of the Clean Water Act. Now granted, we have a lot of things to learn here and this is a lot of, uh, issues to digest in a single bill, but we need to get it done quickly and we need to stop putting roadblocks in the way and this is one of them. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. On the proposed amendment by Senator Rector, Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, I, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker of the 27th Guam Legislature.
Thank you for the corrections, Mr. Speaker.
Mister Chairman, this is not a roadblock. Everybody wants to play attorney and hell, I might as well. The reading of the court order is that the legislature authorizes what? What does the legislature need to authorize? The maximum amount of bonds needed for the full implementation of the consent decree projects. What are the consent decree projects? The consent decree project is the construction of the new landfill and the closure of Ordon. Those are the consent decree projects. Does this amendment say that we have to approve the construction of the landfill further? No. What this amendment says is that for the operation of the system, the day-to-day operation, the privatization of the system, what does the letter from standards, it's not even standards, what does the letter from Ms. Ebola say? That further approval for the leaseback financing may be a problem. Does this say anything at all about the, the operation for the leaseback financing be required by the legislature? It doesn't say that. It says the operation, the collection of the trash, the billing of the system, the operation of the system will be required to be approved by the legislature. To read this as all-encompassing, you're telling me that the court, that the court can order us to privatize the legis, the, the landfill under the consent decree and we can't do anything about it? Is that what somebody is reading into the court consent decree? If it is, then I'm certainly glad we didn't do it. I'm certainly glad I didn't sign that. I'm certainly glad I didn't agree to that consent decree. Because that's not the intent. We are in a consent decree because we violated the Clean Water Act for the lichaid discharge of the Ordon dump into the Longfitt River. That's what took us to the consent decree or that's the violation we were charged with and that we had to clean it up. We did not. When we, when, when the court said, how are you gonna clean this up? We said, we're gonna build a new landfill and then we'll stop dumping at Ordon. That's our plan. That was, and then the governor says, I agree. Then he says, sign here. Okay? Now we gotta pay for that process of closing the Ordon, stopping the lichaid into the discharge of the lichaid into the Longfitt River and build a new one that doesn't let lichaid permeate into the, the underground, underlying substrate after putting the liner. So this idea here from this, it's not even relevant to the discussion and the amendment. At least that's my reading of it. Going back to the court order, it is the financing, in my opinion. It is the legislature authorized without the further need for any legislative authorization. In other words, we say, go and float bonds that when they get these people to buy the bonds at 6% that they get sold. That we don't have to come back and say, we're only gonna approve 40 million of those bonds. Or, we're gonna, we're not gonna sell those bonds because we want 5%. That would violate the court order because it requires us to approve the terms and conditions of the bonds that have been put out to the market, ready buyers, willing buyers, orders placed, and then we say, hold on, gotta go back to the legislature. That would violate this court order. But that's not what we're doing here. At least we haven't gone to that page yet. That's why I say this thing is based upon a set of facts that members of this body gave to Ms. Ebola Brooks. It's, they're not even factual, they're conjecture. It's speculative. We haven't, they're already telling us that those sections of the bill which may have an impact that, we don't know what you're gonna do, but don't do this. So how can we say that we're on page four, that we're violating page 10? We're not even there yet. Hell, we just might approve page 10 as is. The judge is saying that it is the financing plan that shall not be subject to any law, any further legislative approval so that we can proceed with the construction of the projects. And this amendment in no way limits the ability or requires any additional approval for the maximum amount of the bonds to be sold to finance the projects. That, that's all it says. And, and, and I just, and, and if this, if the court order, if you're telling me now that in order to comply that court order, we must privatize the landfill without any further authorization from this body, then, you know, I just finished one case and I think I'm looking for a new one. Because I'm not gonna stand for that. I'm not gonna let the federal government come in here and tell me how to run this government just as I can't go over there and tell them how to run ours. But I do respect their laws and I do operate within the parameters of the laws set that those powers that they don't delegate to the states, they reserve for Congress, I respect those laws. But when they don't reserve the powers to themselves, then they're delegated to the states, then we have the authority to do that. And I don't think Congress gave the federal government the authority to come in here and grab our money and tell us how to solve the problem. They just have to tell us, if you don't solve the problem, you're gonna be subject to fines and penalties. So you have a choice. Either you solve the problem or you pay the fines and penalties. The reason why we're in here now under this process is because the governor said, tell me how to solve the problem and I agree with it. And that's called a consent decree. And the court didn't come in here because they wanted to. The court came in here because the promise made by the signatories of the consent decree, which is the governor acting on behalf of the government of Guam, and I give him that, agreed to these things and promised the court that we're gonna meet those timelines. And the only reason we have a receiver is that the governor did not meet those timelines. And I don't disagree. I mean, that's a fact. Now as to why the governor did not meet those timelines, well, the governor's telling us that members of this body put roadblocks in his way and I don't disagree with that either. I agree that this body, because we didn't agree to the same road of how to get there, diverted the governor and, and he had to divert his attention to other things that he couldn't meet the timelines, that he couldn't get the resources as easily as he wanted to, to meet the timelines. So yeah, we're all at fault here. It's just that the governor's the one on the dolly-dine and that's fortunate, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's his role as governor. The court is telling us with regards to putting in the authorization needed for the full amount so that we can go to Wall Street and sell it and begin building the projects. You know, it's, the judge is telling every one of us, gentlemen, meet me at the airport on March 1st because we're getting on that flight to Wall Street. We're gonna go get that money. We're gonna try. And you have to make sure that when we get to the airport, everything there means that we don't turn that flight back. That we get on that plane, we go to Wall Street, we don't have to come back and ask you guys what you think because you've already allowed us to, you've set the parameters for our action. Now, what we're doing in looking at all this for ourselves is the governor saying, gentlemen, I'm going to take Marine Drive to the airport. And I'm gonna get in that Maxima, or I'm sorry, Continental. I'm gonna get into that Continental and go to the airport, I'm gonna use Marine Drive. And we have members on this body and, and we'd better be up there on March 1st because the judge otherwise is going, there's gonna be consequences. And that consequences is a million dollars a week if you're not at the airport on March 1st to get on that flight. But members of this body are saying, hey, wait a minute, I wanna take Baragada. I'm gonna take the Baragada Road because you know why? Because there's other people that want to go to Wall Street on that plane. Those are the guys who are owed income tax refunds and those are the guys who are owed, uh, COLA. The judge didn't say, you can't pick anybody up on the way. The governor maybe doesn't want to because he thinks the, the judge is telling him you can't. And everybody else who fed standards, this information, is trying to make sure that we don't pick anybody else up. Well, I'm telling you folks that to get to the airport on March 1st, to get on that flight to Wall Street, I wanna take Route 16 in Baragada and pick up those COLA recipients and pick up those income tax people that were owed refunds. And we're all gonna go to Wall Street and we're all gonna try to get the money. And you know what? Our financial experts told us that even if you don't put Section 30 here, we can still go to Wall Street, we can still try, and the market will still respect that and evaluate that, and the bonds are still sellable. So that's, that's, that's as simple as I can put it. This, ladies and gentlemen, this memo is what I would call trying to read our minds. We haven't even put our minds to paper yet. So, the last paragraph in this, which is supposed to speak to this, speaks to the leaseback financing. This speaks to the collection of, of the trash and who should collect it? Can it be collected by private sector or shall it be government employees? If the governor wants to, to change it from its current status, then he has to come to this body and say, hey, I wanna make sure that it's the private sector that collects all the trash. Will you support this plan and present it to us? And we make a decision. It doesn't mean that we can't continue building Lejeune or that it doesn't mean that we can't close Ordon because those are the, what we need to do to comply with a consent decree. To comply with a consent decree doesn't mean that we have to have the trash be collected by the private sector. It doesn't mean that at all. And this just says that if you're gonna do that kind of decision with regards to the operation of the system, that should come back here. So that's why I think this does not run afoul of the consent decree. The consent decree is pretty clear to me when you read it, that what she wants, that should not require any further legislative approval, is the authorization for, authorization for the maximum amount needed to build and construct the consent decree projects. And if it meets that test, then I think we're fine. And I think that this amendment doesn't run afoul of that authorization to implement the projects and that we don't need to require any further action by this legislative body. And Mr. Manning's, Mr. Manning, as he admits himself, is not a financial expert, you know? I'm listening to the government's financial advisor and the government's financial advisor is telling me on the record that a pledge of Section 30 and a pledge of the general fund does not detract the marketability of the funds. It may affect the, some of the financial structuring of the bonds, but it doesn't affect the, the, the marketability, you know? It may be that if we take the Maxima and go to the airport, the governor goes to the airport using Marine Drive, it's gonna cost him a dollar in gas. And if we take the expedition and pick up some of the retirees along the way and we get to the airport, it's gonna cost us a dollar twenty in gas. That's the difference, but does it, does it inhibit us because we have to pay a dollar twenty from getting to the airport? No, it's gonna cost us a little bit more. And yes, maybe, maybe if we take the Section 30 pledge out of here and put the general fund because of the structure of it, it may cost us a dollar twenty in gas. But it doesn't mean we don't get to the airport and it doesn't mean we can't get on that flight. And it doesn't mean the bonds cannot be sold. It just means that it may cost us a little bit more, but we're taking care of other things and other obligations of this government. Because you know what? If I don't pick those guys up in Baragada, the COLA retirees and the income tax refund recipients that we've owed money to, if I just go and use a dollar in gas, I gotta make sure that I pay them 50 cents because they're accumulating interest. So, I go and I use a dollar and twenty gas and I pick them up on the way, or I just go on Marine Drive and use a, only a dollar in gas, but then I gotta come back and pay them 50 cents because that's what is the cost of leaving them behind. There's a cost all the way around and we all have to think about, how are we gonna pay for those costs? You know? There's the financial cost, there's the social... There's the financial cost, there's the social cost, there's the health cost, there's the quality of life cost for these people that we owe, there's the ability to survive, there's the ability to buy between SPAM and maybe corned beef, or maybe Minute Steak versus New York Steak. That's a cost. It's a cost to them, the people that we owe, that we want to leave behind. And that to me is what we as a body here have to all consider, not just this cost of this, but the cost that is being borne, not by us, but by the people we're leaving behind. And I'm saying, we work this through, we don't have to leave anybody behind. I am confident of that, you know? And that's how, when the $20 million issue came up, said, you can't do it. You can't do it. And we said, let's try. And when we tried, with the work of the governor and his staff, we were able to do it. We were able to meet it. And it's that same when we were in Senator Carville's office with Mr. Dirks, you know, last year, for some of the refinancing issues? And we were arguing about, no, you got to do it this way, it's the only way, Stan, you know, I forget the exact, you know, Mr. Carlson was in that? And everybody was saying, no, 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 you can't do it. And I just kept going round and round with Stan. And finally, we decided we're going to try. And we tried and we were successful. You know? So, we have to give Stan the entire spectrum of information we have. We can't feed him, you know, things, and of course, he's going to come up with his opinion with a set of facts that he have. But it's not the entire set of facts that is being considered on the floor of this legislature. And when we get to that, I'm sure Stan will have a different opinion, and I'm sure that most of us will get on the horn with him again and explain our thinking so that he understands the structure of the language that we put in place, and we'll come to a conclusion and a compromise and an understanding. You know? But until we get to the end product and we review all that, this to me is speculative and premature. It's good guide. It provides us an opportunity for some of the parameters for our decisions, and I accept it and I value it. But you can't tell me I can't do what I'm doing here with this because of this. It's just not finished. So, that's how I look at this. That's how I look at with the court order and the consent decree and what it means. That's how I relate it to the amendment and so forth. And I don't think it runs afoul of the judge's decision with regards to how the system will be operated. Thank you, and Sidus Marci.
Thank you very much, Speaker Banglin. And Mr. Vice Chair, Senator Palacios, you're recognized, and then Senator Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, notwithstanding my continuing support, of course, of Bill 51, I share the sentiments and the observation, of course, of the last speaker with respect to the retro amendment. But the item, item one on line seven of page 90, really is confined to only one single issue. And that is the authorization of bonds, and my interpretation of this, and I'm not an attorney, and I don't think you need an attorney to understand, then it says here that there should be, there shall be no further need for legislative authorization that would have to deal with bonds. Now, the retro amendment has nothing to do with any of that. In fact, it only has to do that if there's going to be privatization or partnership or contracting of any of the service for the operation of the systems, which would have been already established or constructed, then this body needs to get involved and have their last say-so. And I like that. I think this body as a policymaker should continue to take back what it has delegated by creating a surrogate legislature to do the things that they are elected to do. And this is one step towards that, is I want to get involved. I want to get involved in how this contract is set out, whether this is beneficial to the people of Guam, whether it's cheaper to contract than to just keep it to us. I mean, we have seen privatization, like the hospitals, an example, I think, three, four years ago, we tried to privatize the cafeterias or whatever that is, that it costs more than if not privatized. And these other things that this body is supposed to continue to guard against, the potential for abuse and dipping into the treasury of Guam to the detriment of the people of Guam. And I stand, I stand to protect those things. And the retro amendment has nothing to do with requiring further legislative authorization for subsequent issuance of bonds and so forth. And so, in light of that, I support that, because it is a mechanism on how to be informed of what's going on and to keep this legislature appraised, so that the best interest of the people of Guam is preserved and nothing more. And for that, I support the retro amendment, and again, my continuing support on Bill 51, eventually, we're going to have to pass something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Gauthier, you're recognized on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I think the retro amendment is a very good amendment. What are we afraid of? What is wrong with doing a cost-benefit analysis? And what is wrong with doing an impact statement to protect the monies of the people of Guam? You know, based on these emails from the states, we might as well just abolish the legislature. I move we abolish the legislature, so that the court and the administration can do what the hell they want to do. Really, Mr. Chairman, this is ridiculous already. We have a responsibility here.
Senator Gauthier, I'm not going to accept that as an appropriate action.
Wonderful. I was going to ask, Mr. Chairman, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm not going to accept that as an appropriate motion at this point in time.
Well, maybe it should be a motion.
Proceed, Senator Gauthier.
Some people here just seem to feel it's okay, but it looks like, you know, we can't do anything here, say, yes, 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 yes. We can't craft a bill that will work for everybody. And that's what we're trying to do, is to craft a bill that will work for everybody, the administration, the court, and most of all, the people of our island. That's the role of the legislature. And I'm not about to abandon that responsibility and make it easy for the bond council and everybody else. They have their agenda and we have ours. Ours is to protect the interests of the people of Guam. That's what the legislature is supposed to do, by crafting policies that will work for everybody. So please remember that, Mr. Chairman, and in all honesty, I think this amendment is And this legislature has a role. And I'm not willing to abandon that role. It sounds, I want to ask one question, Mr. Chairman, maybe someone can answer for me, Mr. Bamba. Who actually wrote this bill? Who wrote the bill? Was it GVB? Was it the court or was it the governor?
I have our legal counsel. Answer that, Senator.
Who wrote this bill?
Good morning, Senator. The legislation was drafted by our bond council based on information we had presented to them, such as what the receiver had asked for, and then also the public-private partnership. So what they did was, based on that information, they drafted legislation to make it flexible for the government to see if they could issue a revenue bond.
So GVB had a part in writing this bill?
Based on the information they presented to the court, that was part of the analysis presented to bond council.
And of course, everybody knows that GVB doesn't want to deal with the legislature at all, and doesn't want to have to come back through our normal processes to deal with the legislature on anything. They're asking too much. And it's not right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Gauthier. Speaker Wapet, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, as I read the amendment, and I'm looking at what it's actually calling for, when you think of a cost-benefit analysis, what that actually is asking for is to weigh the options that are being considered, whether, one, a public-private partnership or government-run. You would like to be able to know whether, how much is that going to cost the government in terms of the land owned by the government? How is it going to affect the employees? How is it going to affect the assets of the government? I mean, it's really cut and dry when you think what the amendment is calling for. The other is...
I apologize, Speaker Wapet. Sergeant Adams, if I can get your assistance. Thank you. Senator, Speaker Wapet, you may proceed.
So what the cost analysis is doing basically is appraising the situation, assessing, you know, what is being proposed. And I think that these, the companies or DPW or the professional team are going to do this, will have to, it's their fiduciary responsibility to conduct that study, to do that assessment, so that then the legislature can make the best decision. And then when you think of economic impact, I mean, we're actually asking for that right now, for a military buildup. And here, we're going to talk about millions of dollars that is going to impact on not just this community, this lifetime, we're talking about two generations who's going to be paying for this landfill. And so, for us then to, I think it's important that we do request for an economic impact statement, because that's going to, again, affect jobs, it's going to affect household maybe income, it's going to affect taxes, it may affect tourism. You know, there's just so much, and we're limited in terms of what it is that we can go out and research and make decisions. So it's incumbent upon DPW or whoever eventually then, who's going to manage this solid waste system, to provide all that information and come back to the legislature. Since when has the legislature ever given up its authority or its power as a deliberative body to debate? Since when is it a court's power to come in and decide for a legislative body on a piece of legislation? And I have to agree with the previous speaker, that if that is the case, then why do we even have a legislature? When what we're going to do is just have the court send down a bill, and you can't do anything to the bill, you can't amend the bill, just pass it and do that duty of yours to just pass it? Well, I'm sorry, because I'm one of the 15 in here that's not going to give up that right. I am not doing my duty to the people of Guam, and I'm not just talking about those who elected for me, but to the entire people of Guam and the children and future generations, to give up that power and not ask questions. Not ask for an impact study, not ask for a cost analysis. I'm not going to give that up. And I think it's wrong for the executive branch to come up here and say, pass it as is. I think it's wrong for the court system to come here and pass it and say, pass it as Because in essence, we are a democratic system, and we do have three branches, although we know with the organic act, the executive branch is far more powerful than any of the other branches. But nevertheless, we have this fiduciary responsibility to the people of Guam. And if anyone wants to give it up, that's their prerogative, but I'm surely not going to. And yes, I read the amendment, I read the court order, I have it here right in front of me, and you're right. Speaker Benn is right. In simple English language, and I'm not an English major, but simple English grammar, the legislature authorizes, and a comma, without the need for further legislative authorization or action, comma, the maximum amount of bonds needed for full implementation of the consent decree projects. I was taught that when you break down your sentences and you get to the noun and the verbs and what it is that you need to do, then in essence, you would read it this way, the legislature authorizes the maximum amount of bonds needed for full implementation of the consent decree projects. It didn't say anything in terms of what it is, any authorization or action that this legislature is going to take on any other matter. So I'm saying then, in essence, Mr. Chairman, that I agree and I definitely support Senator Rector's amendment, and I'm surely not going to be one of those who's just going to rubber stamp this piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wapet. Senator Taitui, on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And will the author, I'd like the author to please yield for my question.
Senator Rector, will you mind yielding?
Okay.
You may proceed, Senator Taitui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very much. So, okay, I do believe that a cost analysis is always needed for something like this, something as big as this, too, that will impact the environment, impact our people of Guam. But how are we going to pay for this? That's what I want to know.
Well, we're about to go out and borrow like hundreds of millions of dollars. It's, I think we can afford to take a little time to make sure that we don't spend it unwisely and invest the money. I mean, Lord knows how we're going to pay for it, but it can't, how can we not pay for it, I think, is the big question.
How can we not know? We have to have some money to pay for this. We, it's obvious that this study needs to be done, I have no argument to that, but, you know, unfunded mandates is a classic example of our government and our federal government. But we can't keep following those same type of walks down the road. So we really need to recognize, in your amendment, which I agree with...
I apologize, Senator Taitui.
Point of information.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I just want to say that Senator Taitui, I know is new, and so is Senator Rector as well, and there's some information that some of us, you know, are privy to because we were here last term. The judge has just made a decision that with the $20 million, she has ordered EPA, who's trying to get a professional team here to use the money to do just that and not delay. So in this case, it's very simple, is that the monies that are there, anything related to the dump can also be used to conduct those studies.
Thank you very much for that point of information, Speaker Wapet. And Senator Taitui and Senator Rector, if I can ask you, in presenting your comments, if you can address the chair as well as the entire body. Thank you very much. Senator Taitui, you still have the floor.
I think my question is answered. It will be coming from this bond. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Senator Taitui?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
If not, Senator Carville, Senator Espadão, Senator Barnes, and then Senator Tom Ada. Senator Carville, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there's been a very good exchange and discussion, dialogue within the body that has been very informative to me against some of the initial issues that I had in regards, again, to the language as put forward by the finance, or Oric Public Finance and Brokabola, there has been also some discussion made from members of the body in regards to the language in the consent decree. So, again, I am still concerned that we have an opinion here, and I don't know whether how much information or facts has been provided to the advisors for coming up of this opinion, but this opinion is very clear. And with that opinion by these financial advisors, that with potential legislative approval necessary, that could be, again, a detriment to the ability of Guam to avoid this weekly million-dollar payment by the courts. So again, that is the opinion of, again, of this advisor, and again, not knowing full well how much information that advisor has been granted or given within this very short period since, again, this amendment has been put forward or since discussions were made yesterday. But with that, I'd like to get an opinion from the administration. And George, George, I don't know whether it would be you or your legal counsel, does the administration share the same... the administration share the same opinion as the advisor? Or do you also have some concerns in regards, and again, we're particular to this amendment, so I understand the amendment here deals with having legislative approval. And I know we're still in the, in the definition part of the, of the bill, but again, what we put here will set precedent, I'm sure as we move along into latter portions of the bill, the, the spirit is still in place that, hey, whatever occurs in, whether it's a public activity bond, or, or like such as this, a leaseback, or whatever we are in system, that there will be a need of legislative approval. So with that, again, from your, from the opinion of the administration, Senator Bamba, are you in concurrence with the opinion put forward by, by, again, the financial advisor?
We are in concurrence with the opinion put forth by the Bond Council. Let me just, you know, I understand Senator Pangolinan's issues and concerns, and I do share that. And, and of course, this body, you know, and even having sat here for 10 years, I know that we can establish parameters upon which an RFP can be issued. And then those are the parameters that we follow. It do not require, that do not, and never have in the past, require coming back to the legislature for approval after the fact. And I, and Senator Ada, who was sitting on the CCU, in there, they were, they, they were able to do private outsourcing of their power operations, as well as their wastewater operations recently, and continuing to look at other ways to be able to bring efficiency to the system and lower the cost to the, ultimately to the ratepayers. We're not opposed to that. And, and, you know, and in looking at the CCU model, it works very well. The legislature, I'm not, I'm not certainly opposed to the legislature setting the parameters for any RFP. I think that that's quite appropriate. The problem here is that the Bond Council feels that, is of the opinion, that the amendment requiring coming back to the legislature for approval of whatever contract or is being entered into would violate the court order. And I would rather err on the side of caution on this, because the consequences of coming, of, of passing this and then sending it to the court and the receiver, and they say no, are too severe. We will have to continue to make the one, we have no choice but to, to make the $1 million payment per week, and we all know the consequences of that. Now, whether this body wants to run that risk, that's clearly, certainly, you know, I mean, I'm not going to debate that. And I understand Senator Pangolinan's concern, and I believe that those, his concerns could be addressed by this body setting the parameters of any RFP. And, and that would be fine with us. And I think it's, it would be appropriate, and it's certainly within the prerogative of the legislature. I think coming back for a final approval, in the opinion of Bond Council, I mean, and as I said, we'll have, we have to, we are following what the Bond Council says, because that's, they've been in communications, that they've looked at the orders, and they've reviewed the orders, they drafted the legislation in accordance with the orders, and it was only at our request and in working with the legislature that these other, other alternatives be considered by the judge. And she did say, "Other alternatives are okay, as long as they meet the consent decree timelines." Those are the, that's the bottom line.
Okay. You know, I would request, but I think it's just for, as we move forward in discussions, I may, I may have some disagreements with how the, the courts are moving in this, in this, in the actions of settling the ordot situation, opening a new landfill, but the courts and the receiver are an integral part of this, of everything that is being acted upon today. I would request, in particular even to this amendment, that we do have the receiver represented in this, in this discussion. So I know we are, we are quartetile 12, Mr. Chair, but again, I think it's so important that as we move forward and deliberate in an issue so important to not only this body, but to the people of Guam, that we get the folks that do have a stake at it, and in particular, it will be the receiver, and that receiver's interaction with the judge that could set things in motion positively or negatively. So I am requesting that, that maybe, if you can indulge, we're almost close to lunch, maybe we could call the receiver in and receive the receiver's opinion on this amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo, Senator Espadon. Senator Calvo, in regards to your request, I will come back to you for a motion, because like the rules of engagement, we do need a motion to be entertained and afforded to consider bringing anyone else to the panel. So I will revert back to you upon the conclusion of the discussion of this, on this particular amendment. Senator Espadon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, several things. First is I, I would have to tend to agree with Senator Pangolinan's interpretation of the court order in terms of just the construction of the sentence, and that the, it basically calls that the legislature authorizes the full amount of the bonds. That's basically the order. But my point is something more, and it goes to actually this amendment that's, that's here. And it goes to a very basic premise of the separation of power, you know, between the executive branch and the legislative branch. The legislative branch is tasked with formulating policy for the island, pretty, pretty much in line with Senator Bamba had to say, right? We can establish the parameters in which we, we operate and whatnot, and then it's upon the executive branch to execute that policy that's set forth. In this situation, under, under the amendment, basically, any, in essence, it's almost like we're, we're giving ourselves the, the ability to micromanage, to go past the policymaking abilities and, and we have, to go now into making the decision as to who gets hired. And I don't believe that's our role. You know, because, again, this is now where the government, I mean, I, I agree with the cost benefit analysis, the importance of that. I agree with economic impact study, and again, those are the parameters that should be included in any RFP that goes forward with any private contractor or any private developer or whatever. However, for us to make the call in deciding who is going to have that contract, I think is steps beyond what we really should be doing. We should be establishing policy and then allowing the executive branch to, to go ahead and execute that policy. Because again, and then if you take a look at just our history, and even just this particular issue alone, the trash situation, the solid waste situation, we have not been able to come to an agreement on many, many fronts. What more when we start talking about who should be given the contracts in terms of operating, financing and operating the landfill? That becomes messy. Ultimately, a decision has got to be made, and sometimes it takes one person to make that decision ultimately, and this is where the executive branch comes in. Right or wrong, whether the decision is right or wrong, at least that falls squarely on his shoulders. On the other hand, when you have 15 different, different opinions, there is that possibility that there is going to be no majority in terms of, of who's going to be able to secure the contract. And besides, like I said, I believe that it's not within our purview to make that decision. I believe, again, we set the policy and the parameters and let the executive branch go forward and implement that policy. And on that basis, I object, or I, or in the alternative, I make the amendment to amend this amendment to strike legislative approval.
Thank you very much, Senator Espadon. On the amendment to the amendment, to delete the words legislative approval. On that amendment, any discussion?
I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Senator Calvo?
Again, I want to thank the Senator, again, Senator Espadon. Again, my concern obviously is, is the unintended consequences as we move forward, and that's why I did request for, for the receiver. But, but again, the Senator has proved a good, made a good point as to really what the roles and responsibility of a legislative policymaking body, and separating that from the executive branch, which is more involved with the day to day and the operation. So again, I, I think it's a very good amendment, and I, I am fully support of the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. On the amendment to the amendment by Senator Espadon. Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, of the 27th Guam Legislature. You know, I certainly understand the rationale by, by my good colleague from Timuning in terms of what he's offering. And, and this is where maybe the language is not as clear, and we have differing interpretations and intention. I see this in terms of what I was trying to amend earlier, the way my intention there and why I support this, because it meets my intention, but maybe the language doesn't meet, is not very, very clear, and, and maybe subject to a differing interpretation. My intention was that the ability or the, the right, the ability to hire a contractor to do that function will be subject to legislative approval. So if we say residential collection, that if the governor says, "I want to privatize legislative," I mean, residential collection, his plan to privatize legislative collections must come to the legislature, and he will submit a bill that says the Department of Public Works is hereby authorized, and the governor of Guam is hereby authorized to, to issue an RFP for the privatization and collection, for the privatization of residential waste collection. In that case, he didn't have to do it, I did that for him. And actually, that was signed into law, you know, and maybe it wouldn't have passed if Senator Rector was here at that time, but nevertheless, that's what happened. I authorized the governor to go out and issue an RFP and give him the right and the ability to manage the operation and issue an RFP to privatize residential collection. And that's the same thing that I, I think for me is what this would do. It didn't say that the governor, after he chooses waste management to enter, to contract for the white, that he, we come down and we say, "The legislature hereby approves the hiring of waste management." That's not the intention. And I think that that's where I agree with a good Senator from Timuning, that it's that policy statement that, yes, we will allow as a policy of this government to privatize residential collection, and that policy should be determined by a vote in this body. As to who gets the contract to do that will be through the competitive bid process. So that to me is what I see is coming down here. Now, and, and that's how I would read this. And if it's not that clear, then maybe that's, that's another discussion I need to have with a good Senator, if, if our intentions are the same. But to me, it's the policy of whether or not residential collection should be done by government or by the private sector is what would require legislative approval. Not that waste management shall be the private company collector of residential waste. That's my, my intention, that's how I read this. And I think that fits with Senator Bamba's issue of, you know, that the, that, that the implementation, that the governor, you know, once we give him that authority, he follows the procurement law, he, he can, he sets the criteria, and as long as it fits those criterias and it fits the procurement law, and it's beneficial to the people of Guam, then it moves forward. It doesn't have to come back here for us to approve the contract, or if we wanted to, we could say, "These are the terms and conditions of a contract. It shall be a 10-year contract. It shall be less, you know, that, that employees cannot be paid less than they're making now as government employees, and they shall be subject to a 5% or 10% increase. They shall get health benefits, and it shall be paid for," and so forth. We could set those conditions, and if you want, I'm sure we could, we'd be very happy to do that, won't we, Senator Rector? You know, and maybe $13 an hour minimum wage for each collector, but I'm sure Senator Rector's willing to do that. But for me, it was the idea of the policy direction of where we want to go, and should that even be the direction this body wants to go? And that's how I think this is, but I could certainly see the, the interpretation that is being given to this body by my good colleague from Timuning. I can, I can see that, how you could read this to mean that. And so, you know, maybe we need a little bit more work on this, but I, I don't think we're all in disagreement on, on what we want to do and what we want to achieve that would allow us to move forward on this.
So, so I can understand your position on that?
Yes, I did.
On the amendment to the amendment, Speaker?
Yes, I, I, I am against that amendment without those kind of complications.
On the amendment to the amendment. On the amendment to the amendment, Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Blas and then Senator Respechel. I'm sorry, Speaker Wampat.
And by the way, you know, my hand did come up before the previous speaker, but...
No, as a matter of fact, it was a race between you and Speaker Ben.
And I know, and I know why you called him, because he constantly addresses...
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, if you want me to highlight the...
No, I'm just joking.
Can you elevate your chair just a little? I'm just joking, just joking.
You want me to switch seats and sit on your desk?
I love you, Madam Speaker, please proceed. Madam Speaker, did you want a recess for lunch? So that we can, I can treat you or something?
I'll just remember when I'm up there, I'm going not...
Speaker Wampat, you have the floor.
Senator Respechel appreciates that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I, like I said earlier, there are just some duties, I suppose, that this legislature is authorized to, to deal with, and we in the legislature, and it wasn't during our time, by the way, would have to review several policies, yes, that are being set by the different entities. We all know that whenever there's going to be any privatization of any entity, that they would need to come to the legislature. We've done that with GTA, we've done that with GWA, the Port Authority, and that's a natural process in which these, those types of issues will come to the legislature. When there are any other rules and regulations as well, where these departments and agencies would have to conduct, and follow the AAA process, then ultimately that would need to come again to the legislature in, in a form of a bill for this legislature to affirm or to not affirm, of course, the rules and regs. And that, again, is another process and a responsibility of the legislature, again, to, to address. And in this case, that's exactly the same thing that we're talking about by requiring that once then, a contract or a company, whatever is selected, comes for the approval of this legislature. It doesn't mean we're going to select, because the selection has already been done. I would suspect, I mean, and feel that the process, the RFP have gone out, they have evaluated it, they have awarded the contract, and then now all they're doing is sending now what the policies are, or the parameters of what that contract is, is going to look like. And this legislature is not going to, at least I don't want, in that case, and I agree with the mover of the amendment, I don't want to decide who the contractor is or what the contract should be. That's not our position, we're policymakers. And I think there are professionals out there who is tasked to do their job in evaluating, writing up, you know, the RFPs, like Senator Ada was saying, is that if it means having to hire a professional team to do just that, then so be it. Because even he and all of us feel, we're definitely not the experts, and we should not be dabbling into some things that is just not in our arena. So I definitely still support the amendment until such time, I guess, if it was going to be further clarified. I understand Senator Pangolinan may come up with another amendment, and that's what I like about the process, is that we all talk about this, we find out that there's some areas that we need to expand, we find out that there may be previous legislations in the past that we may have not remembered, and then ultimately, the amendment just gets better, and the bill is a better bill by the time it leaves this hall. So until such time, Mr. Chairman, that if there's no other amendment that's going to come up, as of this moment, I do support the, the language that was put in by Senator Rector, surely not the amendment to the amendment. I'm sorry, I, as much as I love my friend over there and I respect him a lot, but we both know that there'll be times when we'll disagree. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat, and thank you for accepting my public apology. Senator Respechel, Senator Blas... Senator Blas, I'm sorry, and then Senator Rispio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, I must admit, and I sat here as, when I was looking at the amendment earlier that was proffered by a good senator from Canyara. That is where you're from, right, man? I had the same concerns that was expressed by a good senator from Timuning and good colleague senator from Baragada too as well, that there is a procurement process that we have. And not to infringe upon that process and not to be basically, you know, there was a call earlier, you know, to dissolve the legislature? But now, I was, I just don't want to get into an area where now then the legislature becomes the super body and takes on practices or areas that are clearly executive functions in nature. And although I agree, again, also in principle, with the intent, hopefully, of what this amendment is, I have to agree with the good senator from Baragada and Timuning, that there may be a need to be able to tighten up the language here. But also, I question as to whether or not this is the proper place to put it. We're just talking about the definitions. You know, and if we're going to talk about the policy, and I think it's best for us to be able to state the policy on whether or not we want to make sure that we have a say in as far as what parameters are, that that should be outside and, you know, from, of the definitions. Because let's all be honest with each other. A lot of times, we don't refer to the definitions when we're looking at a document, we don't even look at the definitions unless we need to. We go straight into the meat of the, okay, of the bill, of the law. Then when we have a problem with understanding what the word means, then we will go back and hopefully, first off, we're hoping that it's in the definitions. So I don't know whether this is the proper place to put it. And that, Mr. Chair, I think is a question along with making sure that this language is tightened up, that there's something, I don't think we're going to be able to, to be able to deliberate and finish, recognizing that I can hear some people's stomachs grumbling right now. But maybe this is something we have to chew on and digest first. So that is what I've got to say with this, Mr. Chair. Again, it's, I agree in principle whether it is, I just don't want to cross the line with regards to, and, you know, and trust, I agree with that, we may have, you know, that we have to set, you know, it's our responsibility to set the parameters. Maybe also, in line with Senator Rector's proposal here, is then put a requirement that if there's going to be public money expended and everything, that we require that there's a quarterly update on how this money's being spent. But then it goes back to whether or not this requirement is actually, fits in where we want to put it, in the bill, in the definitions. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Rispio, you're recognized. On the amendment to the amendment, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and thank you for not breaking for lunch and just giving me a...
No, we will conclude conversation on this amendment.
I don't speak very long on many of the issues, and I just want to offer, maybe if the mover of the amendment can withdraw his amendment, or I would offer an amendment to the amendment and get the prime sponsor's support, but before I do that, I just want to say that I am a firm believer of separation of powers. I'm a firm believer of the governor and his ability to run this government and that he should have the powers and the tools to do that. But I'm not a firm or fan of absolute power. And I don't know why the administration seems to think that this legislature will continue to hamstring them, or even myself as a member of this legislature, the governor and his senior advisors forget that the first law that ever had was for the governor to have the ability to make transfer authorities under emergency declarations. And we've seen how this transfer authority was used at the time when the Orda dump went on fire, before the legislature would have to meet and authorize the appropriation for the administration to be able to address these emergencies. And I think that was the greatest recognition in separation of powers and giving the governor the ability to do these things. But there's a fine line, Ms. Chairman, and that fine line is that you must get legislative buy-in at the very beginning. We're at a juncture where the governor, through his use of absolute power, has committed this government and the people, and we're going down this road, where now we're having to face this huge expensive solution to solving our solid waste crisis. And so, I think Senator Rector's amendment, the senator, the good senator, is really making a strong statement that, you know, you just can't do these things unilaterally. And I appreciate the sentiments of the senator from Timuning, who wants to strike out legislative approval, to recognize the governor's ability to hire these people. I don't think senators here want to select who's going to do the work. Because I hope, and I don't think too, that senators intend is to allow the governor to handpick who should do these kinds of work. I hope everything that we do is consistent and pursuant to the procurement process. And that anyone who's selected to do work for the government of Guam is through a procurement process which sets out a specific RFP and specifications on what the scope of work is, and we get the best bang for our buck. If what we're saying is that we don't want the legislature to handpick these contractors or these, or these partners or these subcontractors, then that's in clear violation of the procurement law, and I don't think that's what the administration wants to do also. So I, my amendment to the amendment is not in order, but before we recess for lunch, I'm going to suggest that we insert after the word "the," so the sentence will read, "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, D," and then we insert the words, "authorization to enter into A," so it'll read, "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law..."
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Senator Espada, please present your point of order.
I believe we're doing an amendment to the amendment to the amendment.
No, no, no.
That's correct. Well, he premised his statement on the possibility of having someone rescind their amendment. So Senator Rispio...
Yeah, I'm saying, before we recess for lunch, I'm offering this as amendment, but you would have to withdraw your amendment. So we're going to insert the words, "authorization to enter into a privatization partnership contracting or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent by DPW for the operation of the system shall require cost benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval." So just insert the words, "authorization to enter into A." So it's, and I could put this in writing, but we're, but the...
Okay, but Senator Rispio, because obviously, it's a proposed amendment to the amendment to the amendment.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, the gentleman from Timuning would have to withdraw his amendment, and that we would have to consider this language that just limits the legislature's involvement to authorizing the government of Guam to enter into a privatization partnership contracting or hiring of a contractor subcontractor, and the rest follows with what the senator...
On that suggestion, it would require the consideration on the part of the mover of the amendment to the amendment. Senator Espada, you're recognized just on that notion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand, and I've seen the, his proposed amendment to the amendment. And it probably, you know, it probably is...
I'm sorry, Senator Espada, the consideration here is whether in fact you will yield to rescinding your amendment to the amendment so that we can consider this proposed amendment. Otherwise, if you're saying no, then I will not accept the amendment to the amendment to the amendment. At this time.
I'm not saying no. I just want to make sure that everybody understands, and I think it has been covered, right, by the discussion, that earlier, we were talking about grammatical correctness. And as you read the amendment by Senator Rector, and basically, it says that the hiring of any, if you delete all the words before it, "The hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, agent by DPW for the operation of the system shall require legislative approval." That was the contentious point that I've had. Now, if Senator Rispio's proposed amendment to this amendment would address that situation, then yes, I do withdraw my amendment to the amendment.
Okay, on that motion to withdraw the amendment, the amendment proffered by Senator Espada, no objections. So ordered, Senator Rispio, you're recognized on your...
Thank you very quickly, and thank you, Senator Espada. So let me, my amendment is to insert the words after "the," that would be on line two of the second underlined sentence. Just insert some words here, "authorization to enter into A."
On the amendment by Senator Rispio to incorporate the words right after the, it would read, "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the authorization to enter into A privatization," and on with the primary amendment. On the amendment to the amendment. Any further discussion? Senator Rispio?
Yeah, and then I want to make sure that all the other words, including the handwritten words...
Correct, correct.
The main mover...
That's recognized because that was the primary amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Rispio. Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? No objections, no objection to the amendment to the amendment? So ordered. On the primary amendment, that would read, "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the authorization to enter into a privatization partnership contracting or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost benefit analysis and an economic impact study and a legislative approval." On the, that primary amendment now, we have Senator Barnes, you're next, Speaker. Senators, if I can get your concurrence, we're going to conclude discussion on this particular amendment, and then we will recess for lunch.
Sido, mase, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I stand and rise in support of this amendment that was just previously amended by the good senator from Agania Heights. And you know, as we continue to go down this road and knowing that the changes or the decisions that have to be made and the impact that will surround our community, I want to make sure that the check and balances are indeed safeguarded and protected. And as we look at what has come down to play, inclusive of what my good colleagues talked about just earlier, I would say that a lot of times, folks can interpret things differently. And for me, it would be all about perception. And if a situation were to be presented to a body, it would be usually cited on how they would want to get the analysis back from that individual they're asking for. And if you were to give an opportunity from someone who is not in full agreement of asking that interpretation be made, somebody coming in from the other side who sees it differently would present that whole different matter that was just discussed previously on a whole different topic, I mean, on a whole different angle. So you know, for me, when we talk about having to make sure that the protections of the check and balances are in place, then I really see no problem with this amendment. And I think that in all fairness, to what is being presented before us, we better make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, as what has been advocated through this whole process for the last six, seven years. And when I personally take stance and see that what is, what was perceived to be presented is not being done from the other branch of government, then yes, as a policymaker, I'm going to take that stand and look at protocols being put in place. And for this amendment to come through based on the recommendations and the comments of what my colleagues spoke about earlier, I really don't have an objection. I support this wholeheartedly, so I stand in full support of this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized. On the amendment, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of the amendment to the amendment, and I, to believe that there's a lot of benefit to our community...
I'm sorry, Senator Ada, it's the primary amendment which has been amended.
Oh, the primary amendment, yes. Wait, oh, okay, okay, fine. And so anyway, I rise in full support of that in ensuring that the legislature retains that prerogative to be able to, to be able to review these directions that our government is moving into. Clearly, we are entering into an age now where certainly the issue of public-private partnerships, privatizations, outsourcing is becoming more a norm in our government. But as we go in that direction, certainly, we need to really take a look at that because there are impacts to the community and to the government itself. So certainly, I would want to retain that prerogative to be able to take a look at that. The one thing that I'm concerned though with the amendment is that earlier, one of my colleagues raised the issue about the opportunity to micromanage. And I'm wondering if, you know, the language as it stands is that we, the legislature will provide the authorization to enter into a privatization, a partnership, or contracting, which is really kind of that conceptual direction to go into. But then when we get down into the next line, or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent, now we're getting down to the more specific of company A versus company B, and that then takes us into the realm of micromanaging, which is not where we want it to go. And so, I guess I should probably move then to amend the amendment, if that's in order, to delete the words, "Or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent," and, yeah, delete that term. And that would be an amendment to, that would be my amendment to this amendment.
Okay, Senator Ada, just, I'm sorry, can you please repeat? Your point of order, Senator Calvo.
There has just been a senator that has withdrawn his amendment to ensure that we follow proper protocols and an amendment to the amendment to the amendment. This sure seems like an amendment to the amendment to the amendment.
No, actually, Senator Calvo, this is an amendment to the amended primary amendment. That's, it's a secondary amendment.
This is a secondary amendment.
That was rescinded, that was adopted, so now we are on the amendment as amended. So he's proffering an amendment to that primary amendment.
And then I did, and then another point, and another point of order, the issue that was brought up by the senator from Baragada, by the way, we're moving in the right direction. The thing is, I think he brought up a very good point. This is in the wrong section. And I just want to bring that up to the note to the body. I think we're moving in the right direction. I have no problems how we're moving here, but maybe we should take a lunch break and then, and then put it in the right section.
Thank you for stating your point of order. There is a movement for an amendment to the primary amendment. Point of order, Senator Espada, you're recognized.
Because of the confusion, or not a confusion, but again, lack of a hard copy of the amended amendment, I think it's important that we have it in front of us so we can argue it. I mean, right now, we're kind of conceptually drawing it upon our brains to understand what the amendment to the amendment was as it stands.
I have the, I have the primary amendment as amended, and I recognize Senator Ada's amendment to the primary amendment, but if that's the decision of the body, this is what we will do. I will request, Senator Ada, if I can ask you...
Point of information?
Yes. I'm sorry, Speaker Wampad, point of information, please.
I'm, 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 sorry. That the motion to recess takes precedence, so...
I understand, but I'm trying to relay with you the nature of what we're going to, how we're going to proceed. In this case, Senator Ada's amendment will be, we will come back and return with Senator Ada's amendment, hopefully with a written version of the amended amendment, okay? And we'll discuss, initiate discussion on that. And we'll discuss, initiate discussion on that. But prior to the recess, I did recognize or relay that based on timing considerations, and keep in mind that the chair had highlighted since the inception of this particular discussion, that the receiver had, is making himself available, should it be the decision of the body to have him appear before this body, or should it be a decision of individual senators to communicate directly with him. So prior to the inception of the discussion on Bill 51, that was stated. Now, if there's no objections, I will revert back to Senator Calvo because the rules of engagement requires that a motion be presented and adopted by the body before we entertain any other individual who will be impaneled by the legislature. Senator Calvo, on that motion, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, I move to motion to recess. And again, I think there, it will allow us an opportunity not only to eat, but also...
The allowance to grant you an opportunity to make a statement was to comply with the rules...
Okay, motion to recess, motion to recess.
No, 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 Senator Calvo, I'm sorry. At this point in time, I'm not going to entertain that. I understand, Madam Speaker, it supersedes, I understand, but I think we need to clarify if in fact, the decision of the body is to bring another individual to be impaneled. So your, I made a commitment that I was going to revert back to you before concluding for recess.
Oh, so you mean the request to, now I'm confused. You're asking me on a request to allow an individual to participate in the hearing?
The rules of engagement require that a motion be entertained on the floor to bring any other individual...
Okay, oh, then I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to invite in the receiver to be present in the deliberation on Bill Number 51.
On that motion, there's a motion on the floor.
Can we vote on that after lunch?
There's a motion, Speaker, if I can beg your, yes, Madam Speaker...
I'm stating a point of order only because, yes, recess, a motion to recess takes precedence. The motion that the author, I mean, the mover here is going to require, again, further debate on that motion. So therefore, I think his motion should be addressed when we come back after recess.
So it's a discretionary on the part of the chair to entertain a motion to recess? Or to deny the motion to recess and to proceed with our discussion?
No, it takes precedence, so we will recess.
Okay, so that's what we're basically doing. Is it the decision of the body, we entertain this motion when we return from lunch? We have a motion on the floor...
We can only do one motion at a time.
Motion to recess, Mr. Chair.
And the motion to recess is the motion that takes precedence over the others.
Senators, the committee of the whole is here by recess until 2:00 p.m. this afternoon. Senators, the committee of the whole is now back in session. I'd like to go ahead and recognize several individuals who are in the hallway. Speaker Judy Wapat, Senator Adolpha Palacios, also Senator Matt Rector, and we have a number of senators who are on the premises. Sergeant Anavas, if I can ask you to please bring in the administration representatives and also invite the other senators. Thank you, five-minute recess.
I know I get them on mine. I know too. I don't know why they send it to me.
Hey, because we want to keep you in the loop.
You left last night and you didn't get to meet the one that was there.
No, I did. They came in this morning.
Oh, they came in this morning?
Yeah, they showed us, they actually have a very, very well put together DVD that shows the system and how it operates moving up from an existing facility in Germany. Oh man, it's nice. Real nice. It's very crisp. And their financial threshold, you know, receivers got their commercial rates jacked up to a hundred dollars, a hundred and sixty dollars almost a ton. Their model requires a hundred dollars a ton. I mean, they're telling us right off the bat, and then I ask them, are you talking to the military? And long ago.
I don't know if we allowed you to disclose that, but you didn't have to disclose it, you just did.
Because they would question my motives if it was me. This is mine. Thank you.
You can add it, look at which idea I can have the guy next to me.
I'd rather try this way.
You want to take these back?
Uh, yes, sir.
What are you going to do with the, you're going to recycle it?
Uh, we have to highlight it. We'll give it back to you, I promise.
Don't make any more copies.
Every time you sign one of my pills, you get a candy for sending my pill. Thank you.
How about when we both hurt?
I've been offering it to him since I was eighteen to him. Okay, but it's a no-go. Since I was eighteen, I've been offering it up to him. Oh Logan, isn't he gorgeous? He's six-eight now. You saw how big he was at the big, and I wanted to get to him so that, excuse me, hold on a minute, I want to get to my boy, because there's no way he can get through that small alley to get to mommy, right? I mean, he's just, he's sixteen, six-eight.
Six-eight?
Six-eight. Didn't you remember that real tall boy that was here, the Norwegian Chamorro Mexican? No, now he's, now he's twenty.
Twenty? Shit, I thought he was only fourteen, that's why I did go chase him.
Twenty now. The Norwegian side, my mother's side is very tall.
Oh, from New York?
The Norwegian side. There was Shansky.
From New York jeans?
Yeah, Shansky. So I make large, long, tall babies. And gifted.
Twenty, never mind, the next time I see him, I'm going to jump.
The twenty-one will be in November.
If I vote, I want one of them. I named you to my committee, I get both of them.
Can I do the substitute, an amendment?
I get both.
God, whatever you want, it looks like.
The committee at the halls now back in session. Uh, we're going to go ahead and proceed back with the nature of our discussion. Also recognizing that, I know that an issue was brought up a little earlier. I would like to read this phrase, uh, by the receiver that highlights, "I will continue to be available during discussion of Bill fifty-one by the legislature. I'm available to discuss these issues by phone," da-da-da. So you can read the balance of that particular statement. So he's, he's making himself available to members of this body should that desire, uh, be required or requested by individual senators. We are proceeding back to Senator Ada who had proffered an amendment. Senator Ada, you recognize on your amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the amendment that I want to make, uh, has been passed around. Uh, it's that paragraph and, and basically it deletes the words contracting or the hiring of any contractor, subcontractor, or agent in paragraph N in the definition of system.
On the amendment by Senator Ada, Senator Ada, would you like to provide additional comments on your amendment?
Um, well, before we recess, I, there was the concern raised by the gentleman from Tamuning that the amendment that was proffered by Senator Rector was, um, probably an opportunity for the legislature to be micromanaging. So certainly this amendment then, I believe, addresses that concern. Uh, later on in the discussions, I will be offering to put the same amendment in, uh, later on in page eight, which falls under the powers of the department.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Uh, before I proceed and recognize anyone on the amendment, I'd like to go ahead and recognize the, uh, the presence of Speaker Ben Panglinen, Senator Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senator Palacio, Senator Ruspecho, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Tom Ada, Speaker Judy Wapat, Senator Tai Tegui, Senator Rector, Senator Espardón, and Senator Tenori who are in the halls. I understand the others are surely going to be joining us. On the amendment by Senator Tom Ada, any questions, comments? Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Oh, I just want to say that, that, um, I stand in favor of the amendment to the amendment as amended. I think I said that right. It's, uh, it makes sense. It's, it, as we clean this up and, and make it better language and better, um, enforcement for the people of Guam so that we keep everything in perspective. So I stay, I rise in favor of the amendment to the amended amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the amendment by Senator Ada to amend the primary amendment, any other further discussion? Senator Ada, would you like to close on your amendment to the amendment? No objections, so ordered. On the primary amendment, no further discussion. Senator Rector, if you would like to close on your primary amendment.
Well, I, yes, I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is actually a, a really good amendment, especially after the work of my, my colleagues and the, their, um, good job of coming up with, making it even a better amendment. You know, for the people of Guam, to add a cost-benefit analysis and an economic impact study to anything we do adds accountability and transparency to every act of our government. Accountability and transparency is something that we all strive for.
I'm sorry, Senator Rector, if you can hold on just a second.
Certainly.
We have sideline discussions. Can I just alert everyone in the hallways, please, if there's going to be any sideline discussions to, you have the opportunity to be able to step right outside the session hall. Thank you very much, Senator Rector, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As I was saying, you know, the, one of the good parts about this, or the good part about it, is it adding a cost-benefit analysis and economic impact study is, adds transparency and accountability for everything this government does. And as the legislature, it's very important for all of us to ensure that the people's money is spent wisely and fairly and in the best way, in best amount accountability, uh, for the people of Guam. Now, I, I know there, there might have been some concerns raised before that this might violate the, the court's order. Uh, and yet I didn't see that and I would in no way want to endanger, uh, us violating the court order, which is why I made sure that I went to both legal counsel to ensure that that wasn't so. So I think this is an excellent amendment. It'll, uh, do good for the people of Guam and ensure the accountability that we all strive for. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the primary amendment as amended, any objections, no objection? There's an objection. Can I get a show of hands, all those in favor of the primary amendment as amended? Please raise your, signify by raising your hands. Eight votes, amendment passes. Moving on to page six. We are on page six, senators. Any questions, comments, or concerns? No questions or comments on page six? Uh, Speaker Ben, you're recognized.
Yeah, um, I, I would just like to get some clarification, um, on the use of the word amplification on line twenty-three. That, um, it lets, with the approval of legislaturan Guahan by statute, has the power and is hereby authorized, in addition to, and in amplification of all other powers conferred by the Solid Waste Management and Litter Control Act, or any other provision of this chapter, or by any law of Guam or the United States, to incur limited obligation indebtedness on behalf of the government of Guam by the issuance of bonds pursuant to this article to raise funds for the purpose of acquiring, contracting, improving, equipping, maintaining, repairing, renewing, replacing, reconstructing, or ensuring the system, or any part thereof, or for the purpose of refunding any such bonds, or any other prior obligations of the government of Guam issued for any such purposes, or for any combination of any such purposes for which bonds may be issued and secured as provided for in this article. I mean, all of that power and then we want to amplify it too? What does that mean? And I really have a problem that we are doing a blanket authorization for refunding of any other bonds and any such bonds, if, for the purpose of refunding any such bonds or any other prior obligations of the government issued for any such purpose. Not for this purpose, but for any such purpose. Is that how I read that?
Speaker Panglinen, did you want someone in the panel to respond to your question?
Yes, and what, what power could we amplify?
Uh, I don't have an answer for the amplification of the powers, but the rest of the section, um, basically allows for the, uh, payment of, um, any prior obligations, and that's specific to the paying off of the twenty million dollar loan that was provided earlier, uh, and funding the operations of the solid waste management, um, system. And it, the, the paragraph concludes by saying, "and secured as provided in this article." And this is, uh, relative to Article eight, which is the, the, um, authorization to incur the, the bonds for the purposes of, uh, the activities in which you just mentioned when you read it, which are associated with the management of solid waste management division.
Okay, I hear that, but I, I, I kind of disagree that it's the refunding, that, uh, that the refunding of any such bonds and any other prior obligations is confined to this. I think that, uh, for the purpose of which the bonds may be issued and secured by this article. So the way I read that is that, in order to float the bonds provided for in this article, Article nine, or whatever, Article eight, that we can go out and refund, refinance, redo anything with amplification for any other obligations of the government issued for any such purpose. It's not issued for any such purpose under this article. It's the obligations of the government of Guam for any such purpose. So, you know, unless I understand what that does, I'm going to make a motion to, to remove that. Because I think, I, I don't mind refunding anything for the purpose of the solid waste operations, solid waste funding, solid waste constructions, you know, and let's, let's go ahead and do that. I, I totally agree with that. But that language that says, you know, for any such bonds, for any other obligations, you know, in order to finance the bonds authorized under this article, that's the leap, that's, that's, that's a pretty big leap for me. So that's the way I read that and, and, you know, I would like to see us, you know, that this body approves, as we always do, the refunding and refinancing of government obligations.
Speaker Panglinen, did you have an amendment?
You know, I, I would, I would really, I want to be clear careful, you know, that I'm doing the right thing. So I would like to consult with the legal counsel on that reading and, and ensure that, that I am doing what I intended without jeopardizing the issuance of these bonds.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. On that, on that note, uh, I will give you an opportunity to be able to come back to this particular section. Any other senators on page six? Any other questions or comments? I do have a proposed amendment on page six, and I will have it circulated very shortly. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, senators, there's a amendment that is being circulated as we speak. If I can beg your indulgence, because we're trying to save a few trees. Um, I'm going to move that on subsection five-one-eight-zero-three, my motion is to incorporate the appropriate language as provided in the amendment in the first paragraph. And to disregard the second and third paragraph in this proposed amendment and to retain, uh, the intent is just to replace the first paragraph. Not to replace the entire section, please, but just to replace the first paragraph in that particular subsection. The subsection five-one-eight-zero-three, and the amendments would read, "Or to reimburse the government for its prior payment of such costs." And then continue to read, "Or for the purpose of refunding any such bonds, any other prior obligations that the government issued for any of such purposes, or any other prior obligations that the government secured by any of the pledged revenues." So it's just, if you can just refer only to the first paragraph to replace, the motion is to incorporate those amendments and to replace the first paragraph of this subsection, Mr. Chairman.
Any, uh, any comments of that motion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. There are some costs that, that have been incurred or will be incurred over the course of this entire process. And this, these amendments, this proposed amendment would allow for the government of Guam to be reimbursed such costs. I'll give you a good example. If by any chance we're fortunate enough to acquire the, immediately, the two-hundred-and-three million dollars at the onset, then obviously part of that, that entire process will be trying to reimburse other costs associated that have already been paid out. So that's the amendment that is being proffered, and if there's any questions, I will be able to yield myself, Mr. Chairman. But outside of that, I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any objections to that amendment? Senator Gutter, you're recognized.
There's language here on the second paragraph, second to the last line, on section thirty revenue. Can you explain and clarify that, please? Senator, Senator?
Go ahead and...
I'm sorry, can you please, Senator Gutter?
The second paragraph contains language regarding section thirty revenue.
No, 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 uh, please, please, uh, I'm sorry. I know that I should have extracted that particular section, but in an effort to try to save a few trees, I requested that only paragraph one with the proposed amendments be considered to replace paragraph one in the document that we have, in Bill fifty-one. So disregard the second and third paragraphs, please, because absolutely it's not the intent to try to reincorporate a decision that we made.
Right, because yesterday I made the motion and it passed to remove all references to section thirty.
So to clarify, yes, Senator Gutter, uh, Mr. Chairman, to clarify, uh, section, the second and third paragraphs, please do not look at that, disregard.
So that's essentially stricken out?
Yes, and the amendment is only to replace the first paragraph in subsection five-one-eight-zero-three, because I know there have been other discussions about some of the other following subsequent paragraphs in that section.
Satisfied, Senator Gutter, uh, that, that rather, an amendment has been proffered by Senator, are there any, any objections to that? The first section? Yeah, one moment. One minute recess to discuss that? One minute recess?
Have you looked through this yet?
What page are we on? What page are we on? Judy, where are we?
The legislature back in session. Speaker Panglin, you recognize? You're the last person on that floor.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Senator Uggan for allowing me to work with him on this amendment. And it incorporates the amendment that he had presented earlier, so I want to express my appreciation to Senator Uggan, Mr. Vice Speaker of the 27 Guam Legislature. And the amendment I have under Section 51803 would be to add, or to delete the word "and" in amplification "of", and that is located on lines 22 and 23. So it would just read- So it would just read, um, hereby in, uh, here in, hereby authorized in addition to all other powers conferred by the Solid Waste Management and Little Control Act. So I think that's very clear. We definitely want to let them know that they have those powers and they can execute those powers. I just wasn't sure what amplification did and, you know, for me, it's like, let's not do something we don't, I couldn't understand and couldn't get a, an explanation of. So that would be that, that amendment, and then the other amendment, uh, would be, uh, on the next page, uh, contained, uh, uh, in I, in I lines one through, uh, four basic, uh, four or five. And it would be, um, to add, uh, the words, um, in, uh, for the purpose of, right before that, main ta, after the words, maintaining, um, repairing, et cetera, et cetera, renewing, replacing, reconstructing, or ensuring the system, or any part there, or would be to add, to reimburse the government for its prior year, for its prior payment, or such system bond costs, because the, the bond is for the system itself, the solid waste system, for such system bond costs, comma, or, and then to further on, um, read, um, for the purpose of refunding any such system bonds, so if we issued bonds, we could go ahead and, and, um, refund the system bonds themselves. And, and not any other bonds, just the system bonds, and then, or any other prior obligation of the government issued for any such system purpose. So for example, the twenty million dollar note was issued for the system purpose, and we could pay off that from the system bonds that we float, the hundred, and so we could pay off that note. It allows us to do that. Or any combination of such system purpose for which the bonds may be issued, and then secured as provided for in this article.
Senator Ben, is that amendment to the Algon amendment?
No, 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 no. This is, uh, Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of clarification, uh, my initial amendment has been rescinded.
That's right.
Instead for the amendment that Speaker Ben just proffered. If I can just comment on the proposed amendment, uh, I, I want to thank...
You recognize that, though.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just to comment on the proposed amendment, I want to thank the, the speaker for, uh, working collaboratively on this, because I think it addresses not only the application of the use of the word amplification, but it also, uh, hits at the heart of the amendment that was being proffered initially, and that's ensuring that the government of Guam, any costs incurred as a result of this entire process, that at least we have that option to be able to reimburse the government of Guam from proceeds from this bond, uh, should we be very successful in, in acquiring the additional resources. And I think that that's, that's one of the biggest concerns here, is making sure that any additional costs incurred by the government, that we can get those resources from some of the proceeds that will be floated. So, on that note, I, I thank the speaker again, Speaker Ben, for, uh, making the adjust, the appropriate adjustments, and I certainly support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other speak on the, uh, Pangolinen amendment? Senator Spalding, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if the good senator, uh, who, uh, put in this amendment would, uh, yield to a question?
Yes.
Senator Ben? I, I was just wondering whether, and it's, it's, this is about the reimbursement of any expenditures that we have had, I would imagine, to date, is that correct, uh, correct, Senator?
Yes.
I mean, so this would include the, the, the engineering design, uh, to G T G Engineering, the, the, perhaps the, the money for the eminent domain on purchase of the property, and any other such, uh, expenses that we've incurred historically?
Well, the, I would say no. I would say, when it says prior obligations, it, it would re, it would be a, um, an outstanding obligation, rather than a paid obligation. That's how I would read that. So in other words, all the money that we've already paid, and is paid out, and is satisfied, those don't get reimbursed from this.
Okay.
But any obligation that, and, and in this case, that is outstanding, like the loan.
Okay.
That twenty million dollar loan would be eligible for, uh, uh, refunding, for payment under refunding, under the issuance of the bonds.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Spalding, Senator Ben. Any other, uh, speaker on the Speaker, uh, Ben, Speaker Ben amendment? Is there a... Senator Norrie, you recognize?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments from a, the good gentleman from Timoting. Um, and I'm wondering if maybe we need to put that term somewhere in here, just to make it even further clear, that it is for outstanding debts, you know, not those who have already been paid. Um, so it says, "to reimburse the government for its prior payment of such system bond cost." Um, I don't know if...
That, that's how I would read it, and, you know, either you agree with it, you don't, and as we try to clarify it, you know, maybe the, uh, the comments could come from, from some of our financial advisor and see if that's correct, and we are, we're on the same page.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm just trying to contribute to a better product ultimately. I agree with the sentiments in here, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are in fact not going back to pay for something that wasn't previously appropriated from the legislature, was discretionary funds or monies that were available from the governor who had already been expended, and that those money are then available to the governor, so, um, I have no objection to the amendment.
So, the Pangolinen amendment anymore, any objection? No objection, so ordered. At this point, I would like to recognize, uh, Ali for, uh, some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just, just so, going forward, I want to just make sure that we all, uh, have in mind that it, that the, there's a, the letter from Bond Council, um, I think will clarify some of the frustrations and confusions that we will, um, maybe experience going through the rest of the bill. We have thirty-one more pages. Um, if you could refer to the, does everyone have a copy of the email from, uh, Brooke Ebola from OREC? The, the second paragraph about, on the seventh line down, starting with Bill Fifty-One, she, she says, "Bill Fifty-One was drafted as legislation enabling the issuance of limited obligation bonds securing, secured by tipping fees, section thirty revenues, or a combination of the two. Certain changes will be needed to, to Bill Fifty-One for it to be, for it to fully and properly enable the issuance of general obligation bonds for the landfill projects. These changes go beyond mere substitutions of words and include, but are not limited to, the addition of the pledge of the government's full faith and credit, the inclusion of a covenant to collect sufficient revenues in an amount and time sufficient to pay debt service on the bonds, and similar changes." Um, and so just given that, I would, you know, suggest that, um, you know, that, that these changes, or we allow time for some of these changes to be made according to Bond Council, um, if that is indeed the intent of Senator Pangolinen's previous amendment to the definition of pledged revenue, to make it a general obligation bond, because I think going through the legislation, there are things in here that apply specifically to section thirty revenue, uh, or section thirty revenue pledge, and then are things that are not in here that apply specifically to a general obligation pledge. And I don't think we can go through this, this bill, uh, in its current form, and discuss those properly, and be productive about it i- in the short timeframe that we have to, uh, you know, to comply with a court order. Um, so that's just, I'm throwing that out there, because I think, you know, if we go through the rest of these thirty-one pages and start talking about things that apply to section thirty revenue and strike them, but we, we may not have the, um, the, the opportunity to review language that may be required by Bond Council for a general obligation pledge. So I'm just throwing that out there for, for you all to comment on.
Senator Ben, you recognize?
Thank you very much. It, it was in fact, and it is my in fact intent, my intent to include the full faith and credit when I refer to a general fund pledge, and that would be, uh, inclusive of the full faith and credit of the government of Guam. And I'm sure, uh, you know, we have, like, that there may be specific areas where we need to insert that in this. We have the boilerplate language for that from other issues, and I'm sure that, uh, Ms., uh, Ebola can give us that language very quickly, and would request that she do so, uh, review Bill Fifty-One, knowing that the policy direction has been, uh, made with regards to a general fund, full faith and credit pledge, and that she suggests then to us the appropriate legal, uh, language and the appropriate, uh, sections to insert to ensure that that gets executed. So I would request that Getka and, uh, or Gida and, uh, the, uh, officials and the representatives of the administration, uh, please begin that process. And if you can still get Mr. Manning, I want those estimates on the phases of the construction projects, please.
Thank you for that, uh, Ms. Limteako, thank you for that, uh, clarification. Senator Fang, I got, you, you, okay. Senator Spalding, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, this is just again to, uh, directed at Ali.
Okay.
And again, after hearing, you know, the request by the good senator from Baragata, so I'm, I'm under the impression that moving forward, or probably overnight, we will get some response from Bond Council in terms of what, uh, uh, modifications need to be made, so that they're relevant to the point we are now.
Yes, I think that should be doable. I mean, I'm speaking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding. Any more, uh, comments on, is that line five, section? What part are we now? Page seven?
I'm sorry, Mr., uh, no, I, I, that's a request.
Page seven? Is that section five-one-eight-oh-four?
Page seven. Yeah. Once again, uh, just to be consistent with the change, uh, on page seven, you, you have the same thing, uh, in amplification of, and would be, would, uh, on line twenty-six, that that also be struck again, uh, so that, uh, and all other powers conferred upon, or I'm sorry, hereby authorized in addition to, uh, strike out and in amplification, uh, be, uh, of, and so it would be in addition, in addition to all other powers conferred upon the department by the Guam Solid.
That's not a motion, that's just for consistency?
Yes, that would be a motion to strike that also.
Okay, to strike that. Any objection?
To be consistent with the other amendment that we made. Yes, and to all other...
Okay.
Appearance of that in that context.
So a motion to, uh, strike out and in amplification of, any objection? No objection? So ordered.
I've got it amendment, Mr. Chair. At the, uh...
Senator Richter, you recognize?
Thank you. At the, uh, at the end of section fifty-one-eight-oh-four, on page eight, uh, after line twenty-two, I'd like to insert the following language, which is basically just restating the lang, the amendment that we've already passed, um, so that it's consistent through the document. "Notwithstanding this or any other provisional law, the authorization to enter into a privatization, partnership, or contract by DPW for the operation of the system shall require a cost-benefit analysis, economic impact study, and legislative approval." And everybody should have a written copy of it, it's already been passed.
Any comments on the... Senator Norrie, you recognize?
If, if there is no objection, I would then, uh, like to amend the amendment to strike the previous language in these, in the definition section, because this is where the operative language is located. Definition of the system is just that, definition of the system. But this is where the operative language really should be. So it's correct in the senator's changing of, um, actually adding this language to the substantive portion, but it should be removed from the definition portion unless there's an objection.
Objection.
Okay, so, I withdraw the objection. It's, 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 it's not necessary in the definition portion, but, you know, if, uh, people insist on it being there...
Mr. Chairman, I already stated my objection, so let's go ahead and either show who's supported it or not. Let's move on.
So, uh, is there any objection there then? Okay. Okay. There being no objection, uh, to the rectum amendment, so ordered. So we are now on section five-one-eight-oh-five? Which one? No, no objection, eh? Yeah, okay. Any comment on section five-one-eight-oh-five?
Yes, just to note...
Senator Pangolinen?
To note that this will be one of the sections that, uh, will be, need to be changed, and, uh, while we could work through this change, I think Bond Council has something that they could give us very quickly, and so this would be one of the sections where a change would come from the Bond Council.
Okay.
Uh, because of the reference to section thirty.
Senator... Senator Gotch?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have a, uh, an amendment. If I could have thirty seconds while we make copies?
We'll recess for thirty seconds.
Judy, did you write this in UP-ish?
No, it should be references, not revenue.
Oh, okay. References.
References, it was a typo. I didn't type it. People count as I did. I'm not going to read my references. References.
Okay. Are you writing, except for the revenues? Is it a basic?
No, except for references.
No, references. References.
Okay, so on page?
Uh, page 27, section 4, that's all the flowers.
Page what?
Yeah, that's, no, no, no. I mean, the only other place where he can see is 27. The idea is that the judge doesn't want us to have anything to do with this, right? Or any subsequent issuance of this law or series. Have to go to the law scene.
Who would love it? Because they get money. They'll get money from the solid waste. That's another issue. Ready, Mr. Chairman?
The legislative's back in session. Senator Gortat, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an amendment I circulated. There is one, one error, and the error is on the second line of my amendment. The word is, except for the, except for the references, not revenues, references of the rate-setting authorities. So the amendment, Mr. Chairman, is, "All references to the Public Utilities Commission contained in bill 51 are hereby deleted and replaced with the Guam Legislature, except for the references to the rate-setting authorities of the Public Utilities Commission." Now, there are two places where the Public Utilities Commission is specifically referenced. One is in section 51805, page eight, and the other is on page 27, lines 27 and 28. But I would like to suggest that legal counsel effectuate the intent of this amendment, so that the Public Utilities Commission's responsibility in bill 51 will simply be with reference to rate setting, but not to replace the work of the legislature. That's the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can you speak on the motion? Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, if the author of the amendment can just yield, you know, understanding, I understand, I understand the, the, the role of the Public Utilities Commission in, and again, in the enabling legislation of the Public Utilities Commission. I'm just trying to get an understanding from, from the author of the amendment, what is this, what is this amendment, what is its purpose? And just so I can clearly understand that, why the need for it? I'm just a little confused, and if she's going to make this amendment, please explain it to this body, what is the rationale behind the movement of this?
Thank you.
And then, after that, I will request maybe a, a statement by the administration, since the administration did author this bill, and what the potential impacts of this amendment will be. So it's a two-faced question. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Senator Gortat, would you yield over there?
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, I read the bill carefully, and if you follow the, the flow of the bill and the sense of the bill, it's very evident to me that there was a great effort placed in this bill to remove the legislature from participation in this action after we approved the bill, and to defer any further approvals to the Public Utilities Commission rather than the Guam Legislature. And you know, the Public Utilities Commission responsibility by law is really a rate-setting and approval kind of function, and I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think they should be making public policy for the people of Guam. So that's really the sense of my amendment. It continues to authorize the Public Utilities Commission, as reflected in the bill, to approve rates for tipping fees, et cetera, but not to replace the legislature in making policy or approving policy. Thank you.
Yeah, can I qualify my second question then, since I still have the microphone?
Yes, go ahead.
And then I just want to, I guess, qualify the second question based on the statement made by the author of the amendment. The author of the amendment has, again, wrote this amendment based in what she believes the spirit of this legislation was, in terms of what was the intention of the administration who drafted this bill. So I guess the first part of the question, again, I would, I would address to Senator Bamba, or those that produced, that drafted this legislation. Was it the intent of, of the authors of this bill that, with the language in references to the Public Utilities Commission, that it would be a way to circumvent the role and the authority of the legislature? And, and that's the first part of my question, if that was your intent. And then number two, if you could please comment on this amendment and what you, what you believe are the ramifications, if any, if this amendment passes.
Thank you for that, Senator Calvo. Go ahead, Senator Bamba.
Thank you, Senator. First of all, I think the amendment is very far-reaching and extremely dangerous to a ground that the legislature is now placing itself into as a rate-setting body. I say that because it would affect section 51805, any references to Public Utilities Commission, and that's clearly referenced in page eight with, that they are the ones that would set the rates, fees, and that. As a, to, as a matter of history, I was in the legislature at the time when GPA was returned, was turned over from, when the Navy, when the government of Guam took over the power system from the Navy, and issued revenue bonds. GPA then issued revenue bonds to increase its capacity and build generators and the like. What happened was, the senator with oversight at that time, former Senator Parkinson, of course, took the, immediately rolled back, or introduced a bill to roll back the rates, and consequently, default, GPA was placed in default, and had to come up with something like.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Twenty-eight million. And I'm just.
Point of order. I'm sorry, Mr. Bamba.
What's your point of order?
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a misunderstanding. The intent of my amendment is not for the legislature to establish rates for tipping fees or solid waste disposal. My, my reference, my discussion was that there are two places in this bill that talk about the Public Utilities Commission. The first reference is in section 51805, which says, "The Public Utilities Commission shall set rates and fees and charges for solid waste services." I don't have a problem with that. What I want to do is amend page 27, line 27 and 28. But I want to bring this out now to make the point, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. We're going section by.
I understand that. We have to, we have to go page by page, section by section.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're going too fast for our Republican colleagues.
Maybe. Okay, I don't mind waiting.
Okay.
But I will make this change later.
I think you're going faster than your, than your minds are moving.
I will make this change later then. I don't mind waiting.
So the amendment to section 805 is?
Refer to page 27, line 27 and 28.
Okay, so we will not consider it at this time?
See, I'm on page eight.
Thank, thank you for that, Senator Gortat. Senator Espaldón? Yeah, I see we've drawn the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to go back, and you know, we added an amendment, and it was proffered by Senator Richter, that basically that clause, "The notwithstanding this or any other provisional law, the privatization, partnership, or contract of the hiring of contractor..." I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. The, as amended, basically, here it is. "Notwithstanding this or any other provision of law, the authorization to enter into a privatization, partnership, or contract by DPW for the operation of system shall require a cost-benefit, da-da-da-da-da, et cetera." Right? However, if we look at page eight, starting at around line number seven, excuse me, let's go down to line number 11, within this legislation, we are giving the authorization. The department may operate the ODOT dump, or may contract for the operation of ODOT dump, and it goes, and it reads pretty much consistently all the way through to line 22, which we're already giving the Department of Public Works the authorization to contract out. So now the question becomes, you know, in one section, we're saying, notwithstanding, we still have to come before the legislature to contract out, and yet we're already giving it to them here. So there seems to be some kind of a tension created by this, by the language now in the bill. One, one part of the, one thought says, we give the department the authority to contract out, and then by, by the amendments we've made, we're saying that, you know, to contract out, they still have to come before us. So what are we really saying? In other words, what is the real policy that we're setting now? Because we have some contradictory language now in this legislation, and this is probably one of the problems that we have to be very careful of, of starting, putting all these amendments in without really taking a look at the overall picture, to see if it's actually contrary to previous sections that are already, we have kind of approved of, and yet, you know, we're creating a lot of language in here that really renders this bill totally ineffective, or at, you know, probably in the least worst-case scenario, one that is contradictory and very difficult to interpret. So I just want to bring that out, and I'm not really sure how to handle that, because we have already passed that into, these amendments into it, and yet some of the language that's established within here already gives that authorization. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Espaldón. Senator Richter, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I understand that his concern, but if you would read farther down in that section, on line 12 and 13, it says that "The department may operate or may contract for the operation of ODOT dump in accordance with Guam law and its permit under this chapter." So it's a, it, it says that, and its permit under this chapter. This chapter defines how it's permitted by the amendment. The amendment defines how it's permitted, and so it, it, this supersedes, this, the amendment supersedes it and tells it how it's permitted, so it's okay. I don't see any conflict in it.
Well, not necessarily, it's not necessarily okay. Maybe in his mind, it's okay, but it's not necessarily okay, Mr. Chair, because again, maybe he is addressing one issue, but he doesn't address the overall consistency of the bill, and that's my concern.
Thank you, Espaldón. Senator Ben?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and if I may just.
Yes.
Inject my own interpretation of this, because I'm beginning to like it. The, I agree with the senator from Timuni. He's absolutely correct in the fact that this section proposes to give the governor the authority to do that. And this section, that's why it's before this body, and we're going to agree whether we want him to do that or not. And so by adopting Mr. and Senator Richter's saying, amendment, we're saying, yes, we could put these things in, but if they are in here, notwithstanding what we're saying here, that if he wants to do this, then he's got to come back here with the economic analysis, with, with the plan, et cetera, et cetera, as we required in that earlier section, notwithstanding that he can do this as we provide for it here. The other, the other provision is, you just remove the notwithstanding in Senator Richter's amendment, and then delete all this. And that would mean then, that we are giving the governor the authority to do these things, but he must submit them to us with the attendant requirements that we put in there, the economic analysis, the impact statement, et cetera, et cetera. So Senator Espaldón is correct in that respect, is that, yeah, they are contradictory, but that notwithstanding clause, plus the additional requirements, and that's why I'm saying, that's where we come from with regards to the policy statement, is that we are making a policy statement that he's allowed to do this, but in that policy statement, we're also saying that he must send those things down, and, and that in order to move forward on doing that, he must satisfy that requirement. So on its surface, it, it does look like it's contradictory, but that's, you know, infamous notwithstanding clause says, yes, you may go ahead, but you have to send, do these things first, send these studies down, and then we will act on that once more. And so it, it, it does allow the governor to do those things, and allows the, then for the two conflicting statements to be read, it's almost like two negatives, you know, makes a positive. You know? A double negative means a positive. And so in that respect, I think that's what we have here. And that's the value of that notwithstanding clause. So that, that really, that, that's, that's how I read this. It is in fact, you know, in, in what I have, I think, in my understanding, and, and I agree with both of them.
Thank you, Senator Ben. So my understanding is that the directed amendment has been passed.
Yes.
So could you give me guidance on this, what then next to do?
Mr. Chair, there is no motion on the floor. It's just simply observations that are being stated. So at this point, we're not acting on anything except observations. So just whatever the next section is.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Senator Espaldón, you recognize?
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and I know this is probably a little unorthodox in how, how we're going about this, but Senator Torres is right. I'm not making a motion, I'm just making sure that we're all fully aware.
Okay.
That there may be contradic, and while the intent, as Senator Pangalinen explained, is, is as such as he put it out to be, for someone who is not within this room right now, and who may have to interpret this law at a later time, whether that is evidently clear, becomes an issue. And then because, because there would have to be an interpretation of the law, and if the law is not clear, then what? Right? Then what? And on that basis alone, the court may reject it, just because it is not a clear bill. So again, I just want to put that out to everybody, that by going down this road the way we've been doing it, we may not come up, we may come up with a bill that is inconsistent in all the various passages, even though the intent within this body is clear. And, but again, we're not the ones who are eventually going to have to interpret it, it's going to be the court. And I caution everybody to be very careful in how we craft this bill, and take it apart and cut and paste our own little ideas, because in the end, we may have bahaki clothing when we really intended to wear a tuxedo. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that observation, Senator Espaldón. Senator Ben, you recognize?
Thank you very much. I do have a question on, on, on that section, specifically 58, 51804, and this would be directed to the governor's legal counsel, I guess, and, and the, the financial advisors, as to the extent that they participated in the drafting of this bill. On line seven, it says, "The department does not have jurisdiction over the collection and transportation of solid waste from any hotel, commercial, or industrial establishment, government agencies, or from any multiple dwelling units other than duplexes." That is a statement of, if I read that, we are in fact saying, we do not have that. Is there anything in law right now that says we do not have that? I know maybe we don't have anything in law that says, that, I think the only, and, and I think this comes from the fact that the law says that the solid waste collection shall only collect refuse for residences from, or shall only collect garbage or solid waste from residences and buildings less than duplexes. But it doesn't, the law doesn't say that we don't have authority over the trash and the solid waste generated by commercial establishments, and et cetera, et cetera. When we talked about that, we talked about the collection aspect, that we're not authorizing our government trash collector, solid waste division, to go out and say, you do that. We're just saying, you only, you only collect here. But we didn't say, but by saying that, we're not saying you don't have, the government of Guam doesn't have a right to the solid waste generated there. And this is the debate on flow control, et cetera. So if I read this, we're saying that the government has no jurisdiction over this, over the commercial waste. And if that is such a case, then, then all of our financing. But it doesn't, the law doesn't say that we don't have authority over the trash and the solid waste generated by commercial establishments, and et cetera, et cetera. When we talked about that, we talked about the collection aspect, that we're not authorizing our government trash collector, solid waste division, to go out and say, you do that. We're just saying, you only, you only collect here. But we didn't say, but by saying that, we're not saying you don't have, the government of Guam doesn't have a right to the solid waste generated there. And this is the debate on flow control, et cetera. So if I read this, we're saying that the government has no jurisdiction over this, over the commercial waste. And if that is such a case, then all of our financing calculations for the landfill go out the window. Because the financial calculations for the cost of it, for the size that we need, basically assumes that trash, including all commercial trash, is going to come to this landfill, and the tipping fees are going to support the repayment of the bond. So if we're giving that up now, then, ladies and gentlemen, you know, we are looking at tipping rates that may not only quadruple, but if we were to conduct $160 million landfill, and the only, or the source of payment, one source of payment of that is only on the residential tipping fee, that we now have to have a tipping fee for the residences, that may be, you know, 20 times to support the 160. So all of the financial calculations change by this statement here. And so I think we need some kind of maybe discussion here on the intent of this, and how this would affect the financing scheme that is being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Ben.
I just, trying to clarify things, because every presentation that the receiver has made to the court included, you know, tipping fees for both residential and commercial. This collection of the waste itself, which actually, commercial haulers or collect, or, you know, like Mr. Rubbishman, or, I forgot who the other companies are, but, you know, that they do have contracts with, you know, hotels, or with, you know, other multiple dwelling units, apartment condos and others. They do the, the commercial haulers are the ones that are, that collect, they actually collect the trash. They take it to, order it as it is now, and the trash that they collect is actually weighed and charged accordingly, according to rates, and commercial rates. And I don't see, and I think, because this just applies to the collection of the trash itself.
Right. But if the government, I understand that, but somewhere along the line, we must make a decision. What happens to that when they collect it? What happens, for example, if somebody decides that they're going to collect the trash, all right, and then they're going to put it in, for all their commercial clients, put it in a container, and ship it off island? That revenue that would have gone to the new landfill would not be there, and so our financial calculations change. So I understand, and I don't, I don't, my intent is not to inject the government's right to go out and collect the commercial. That's not my intent. Let that system stay in place. My concern is that if we don't control where that trash goes, then all of our assumptions for the revenue of the tipping fee are now understated, because they can actually take their thing, put it in a container, and ship it off island.
Yeah. I see where you're coming from, and you're right. I mean, you know, there has to be language that is crafted that would clearly delineate that. And, you know, this, although this came from the bond council, and it does, but from my perspective, which is probably same as yours.
And so if I could ask maybe, maybe the governor's legal counsel to propose some kind of language that would resolve that matter?
Okay.
Thank you for that, Senator Bamba. Senator Togan, recognize, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on that conversation, if I may, Senator Bamba, isn't there already in existing law, the authorization and any restrictions thereof in terms of the services being provided for the collection, the transportation of solid waste for commercial entities? So if, so if in fact we already have that in law, is there any need to regurgitate or repeat?
Yeah, we'd have to check with legal counsel why, you know, this was inserted in there, because if it's an existing law, it provides for the outsourcing, if you will, of the commercial or other activities, and of course, there's another law that allows for the two-thirds of the, outsourcing of the two-thirds of the collection for the residential, which we are implementing, but, you know.
But see, just the existing laws already reflects the desire of the community, at least over the course of the last eight, 12 years.
I mean, to answer directly, I really, I'm not sure, you know, and legal counsel will, you know, provide the necessary language, so that it is clear, that because we do want to ensure that the trash that's collected from anywhere, any source on the island, will proceed from, I mean, will be at, will go to the new landfill, as it does affect the revenue stream ultimately.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Senator Bamba. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that, Senator Bamba. Any more comments on section 81, 51805?
Just on 805.
Okay, 805, 1805.
I read 81805, and I would like to amend section, I mean, line 13 on page nine. And after reading it, it's a fairly simple and straightforward substitution in this case, and I'm sure that it's already been done. And that would be to just change section 30 there to general fund revenue, because it's now a full faith and credit, and so if the tipping fees are not enough, the general fund will kick in, just as if the tipping fees weren't enough, the section 30 would kick in. And so it's just a substitution in that case.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Senator Togan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can just yield to the motion, the proposed amendment by Senator Panglinen, because there was a general motion that was provided a little earlier that would address any incorporation and application of the use of section 30 funds to, in this legislation. So I'm under the impression that that, this section would also be addressed.
Yes, I'm reverencing her amendment.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, because I just wanted to make sure that we're consistent throughout. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Speaker Panglinen.
Thanks, Senator. Senator Tamada, you recognize, please?
Well, first of all, I guess was Senator Panglinen's concern addressed with, okay. Well, then on that same line, actually, that paragraph from starting from line six, my concern is that the PUC is tasked with setting the rates, and it explains here very clearly, to the level that is adequate to cover whatever debt service is required, the cost of operations, and whatever other obligations that it must meet. It's got to set that level of rates. Now, unlike power, where if the rates start going up, the consumer's response appropriately will be to start turning off lights and air conditioners in the house. Similarly, with the water utility, when the rates start going up too high, then you start fixing leaks, you flush the toilet not as frequently, and whatever other, you know, measures you need to take to cut back on your consumption. Unfortunately, with solid waste, the consumer's response may be possibly to take the, his, the garbage and throw it out in the jungle, because he cannot afford to pay the monthly tipping fees, and if he doesn't pay it, DPW won't pick it up, we're going to see more burning in the backyard, and so it's very much unlike the utility services. So I want to, I want to make an amendment, and counsel is writing it, but basically, the change would be on, starting at line 14, talks about the purposes, purposes and, no, let me read, starting at page six. It would read, "Except to the extent otherwise permitted or required by an indenture pursuant to which bonds are issued, rates, fees, and charges shall at all times be fixed to yield annual revenue of the system, at least equal to the sum of the annual principal payments and interest charges on all bonds then outstanding. All coverage and reserve fund requirements relating to such bonds, any obligations undertaken pursuant to Article 9 of this chapter, and the annual system operation and maintenance costs, provided however that general fund revenue may be used for the purposes, for the purposes and treated as satisfying these requirements, period." And then delete everything after that, because the way this particular paragraph reads, if you continue on to the next couple of lines, is that general fund revenue can only be used with respect to bonds related to the closure of the Ordo Dump. And so after that is done, if the tipping fees continue to need, to continue going up, this doesn't allow for then general funds to be used to subsidize the tipping fees, if that may, if that is what is necessary. So counsel is writing the amendment, and basically, it's just the deletion of the words of this paragraph on line 14 and lines 15 and 16.
Okay. We're going to one-minute recess for the passage of that amendment.
AB, AB, AB. Where the AB key?
Can I get a copy?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
Committee of the House is back in session. Thank you, Senator Palacios, for carrying the chair. Senator Ada, on your amendment?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. The amendment that I was proposing, it's being passed around now, and basically, it just substitutes the word "the" for "these" requirements, and then deletes the rest of the remaining part of that sentence on line 15 and 16.
On Senator Ada's amendment, Speaker Panglinen, your recognition.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The way, the way I read the original amendment, and when it was for section 30, was that section 30 would only kick in to make up any deficiency for the debt service, not the operations of the solid waste division itself. So when we did the pledge of the section 30, the section 30 would be used to make any, up for any deficiency from the tipping fees after paying for operations and such, for the debt service on the bonds. With this, what this allows, in the way I read it, is that it allows now the general fund to not only make up the deficiency for the debt service, but for the operation of the department. And I think for me personally, I would like the tipping fee to be set so that it supports the operation, and we just know that, and said it so that it can support the operations and the debt service. But just in case it does not, because of the fluctuation in volume or whatever, and that there is not enough money after paying for operations, that the debt service is 10 million, and the operations is 10 million, and we collect 18 million, we pay for the operations at 10, we have a leftover of eight for the, for the debt service payment, then the general fund would kick in 2 million for the debt service. This way, it allows us, it allows, in my, the way it could happen is that we also subsidize the operation, and I don't think that that's what we want to do. What we want to do is ensure that the rates are self-sustaining, and set at the rate that can, that can do both, but in the event that, because of some unforeseen operational issues or so forth, or recycling, et cetera, et cetera, that if there's not enough to pay for the debt service, then the general fund would kick it in. And so this opens up the general fund to do more than just be a backstop for the debt service. And I, for me, I would like to limit the backstop of the general fund just to the debt service portion of the operate, of the system, not the debts, the debt service and operation of the system. So that's the way I look at this, and that's why I'm kind of really thinking hard about this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On the Ada amendment, any other comments or questions? Senator Rector, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, DBW is not an autonomous agency, so currently, it's a public agency, and one way or another, the general fund is responsible for covering any shortages in the operations. So I don't see how there's, there's any problem ensuring that the general, general revenue, general fund backs up the operations of the dump, or the landfill is the thing, is the operations of DPW Solid Waste Division. So unless there's some other issue, I stand in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Any other comments or questions on the Ada amendment? Senator Teno, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask the author one more time to be clear about the omission or the deletion of the language.
Senator Ada, would you mind yielding to the, good senator? Senator Teno, you may proceed.
Could you explain it one more time?
The way I read the, especially on line 15 and 16, is that it's a limiting language that section 30 can only be used for the purposes of this particular paragraph. that section 30 can only be used for the purposes of this particular paragraph. This particular paragraph talks about setting rates enough to be able to satisfy the, the debt service, the, on, on the bonds and the annual system operation and maintenance. So you got to set rates that high, whatever that is. And that, however, that, that in this case, general fund revenue may be used for these purposes, treated as satisfying these requirements of this paragraph, with respect to the cost of the closure of the Or道dump. So once we've closed the Or道dump, that debt service requirement is going to continue on, because we got to close Or道dump by 2012, whatever it is. So according to this language, if we borrowed money to close the Or道dump, once we've done that, and we've, and we've, and we've satisfied the debt requirement for that particular project, then you cannot use the general obligation fund anymore. That's, that's the way I'm reading, is that this is a very limiting language, that it's, that, you know, that general fund can only kick in just for Or道dump.
Senator Tenorio, does that answer your question?
Sort of. You know, I'm, I'm looking at this in the same sort of good faith approach to everything that I've looked at so far, and I'm concerned about the elimination of this last paragraph, the last line that is, because if you read it through its entirety, it talks about what the gentleman just mentioned, about the, the rates being set to satisfy the annual principal payments, interest payments, coverage of reserve, and reserve fund requirements relating to such bonds, any obligations under, undertaken pursuant to Article 9 of this chapter, the annual system, operations, and maintenance costs, provided however, that what is now thing, I think is general fund, the general fund revenue may be used for the purposes and treated as satisfying, the original language is, the requirements of this paragraph with respect to the cost of closure of the Or道dump and the bonds or other obligations there, related there too. So if you take this language out at the bottom, and you're saying that you're going to set the rates for all of these different costs, to satisfy the needs of the paragraph contained in this one section, 51805, but you remove the Or道dump and the bonds or other, or other obligations related there too, do you not, do you not cut off the head of this, the, I mean, cut off the purpose for which this whole thing is written? So I want to go to Shannon Titino then and ask her, because, you know, has been commented by one of my other colleagues, I'm not a lawyer and I don't have a JD after my name, and thank God we got so many in the room that do. So Ms. Lujan, if you would, please, just give me your opinion. Are we, are we going to be going down a road like we have before in, in, in tweaking the language with the law of unintended consequences by removing this language and saying, we're only going to be satisfying these requirements, but you take out all the other language and you basically nullify the section? Is this damaging?
Well, I, well, I believe when it, when it was initially drafted, we were, we were contemplating a section 30 backstop, and I, I tend to agree with Senator Panglinen's analysis, and I would be hesitant in removing any language that's currently there because of the intent of the original measure was, was that section 30 would not be touched unless, of course, the tipping fees were insufficient to repay the revenue bond. And so again, you know, we, we caution that any removal of such language until, of course, we verify with bond counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in the same opinion, you know. We're really in a precarious situation. We've, we've messed with the section 30 and taken out and put it general fund. We've talked about the legislative approval and all the other requirements in order to be able to do something that the bill, the bill already has. And now we're going to put this other, we're going to presumably, if this amendment changes, the context of the language here without consulting with the legal counsel, go down a road which ultimately may wind us back in the same situation on March 1st, as I've said before, where we're going to a million dollars a week, it's going to be siphoned out, or otherwise the alternative is closing the Or道dump. Either which one, I'm not going to be a party to, and I therefore object to the amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Any other speakers on the Ada amendment? If not, Senator Ada, would you like to close on your amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I mean, I, I certainly recognize the validity of the gentleman's concerns, the gentleman from Baragada, about that the operation should sustain itself, and it should not really require a subsidy. But as I had mentioned earlier, the garbage, the solid waste pickup services is so unlike power and water, where the consumer can certainly go in and control the, his consumption of that service. In the case of the, the solid waste pickup, you know, his only alternative, if he can't afford the annual, the monthly tipping fee, is to either burn it, stack it up in the yard, throw it in the jungles, and, and that's, I feel, we got to recognize that because the PUC, its mandate is to set rates so that it meets certain costs, regardless of whether the impact or the implication of that will result in garbage being dumped in the, in the backyards and the jungle. So that, that was simply the concern that I was trying to address. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. On the Ada amendment, all those in favor of, there's been a...
Just one more, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Ada, your recognition.
In, in the event that if this amendment does pass, it's brought to my attention that I guess, because the amendment, the way it's written, technically puts back in section 30 money, so it, it says amend the following, 5180, 51805, and in an earlier amendment, wherever it said section 30 was to be replaced with the term general fund. Well, then my amendment then reverses that particular amendment, so we would, I would, we would need to also make that additional amendment change to keep that reference to the general fund.
On the amendment, to the amendment by Senator Ada, to change the words section 30 to general fund, any objections, objections, sort of, on the primary amendment by Senator Ada? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. For amendment fails. Any other questions or comments on subsection 51805? Senator Cavill, your recognition on section 51805.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I beg your indulgence, Mr. Chair, again, but prior to lunch, I had requested, again, of course I had moved to, to invite to the body the presence of the, of the receiver. And, and again, I wish to make that motion again, and that being that, again, we have, I've several, gone through several bills in the past that deal with an authorization to borrow. This one's a little bit more complicated because we have the clock ticking in when Or道 is to be, supposed to be closed, as well as some of the court mandates as to requirements for funding the opening of a new landfill and the closure of that. And again, because there is a, a court action that is ongoing, I think it wise for the, for the receiver to be present. It would be an opportunity not only for the receiver to comment on the amendments that are, to be proffered from this way, juncture forward, but maybe also if he were to come in, to comment so far on the amendments that have been made, in particular to their perspective, and so we can get an idea of what presentation the receiver will be making to the courts in the not-too-distant future. So again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to invite the receiver to, to the, this body in regards to presentation deliberation on Bill 51.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. On the motion to allow for the receiver to be present in legislature, please do recognize that the chair had recognized and had stated publicly on several occasions that the receiver has made himself accessible and available to members of this body on an individualized basis consistently over the course of the last three days. So in recognition of that, any questions or comments on the proposed motion to allow the receiver to join us in this panel?
If you can please give us a discount.
Speaker Panglinen, did you want to? Speaker Panglinen, did you want to comment on the motion?
Maybe he won't have to pay GRT when he's addressing us.
Okay, senators, there's a motion on the floor to allow for the receiver to join us in this conversation, this dialogue. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. Any objections?
Yes, there's an objection.
There's, there's been a couple of objections signified, so all those in favor, please signify.
Just for the purposes of understanding, please advise which senator has objected to, again, this very transparent, open body.
Senator Cavill, I am taking the votes. Please, please allow for the votes, all those in favor of the motion.
An unseen.
Please signify by raising your hands. Motion fails. Moving on to subsection 51806, any questions or comments? Subsection 5107, page 10. For the, the information of the body, we will complete discussion on page 10, and then there's been a request by GIDEA, as well as bond counsel, to consider the possibility of allowing them to make the appropriate amendments that will be consistent with the floating of a general bond, that would incorporate all the actions that have already taken place by the body, but make it consistent with the floating of a general obligation bond. So based on that request, we will cease conversation on the bond component on page 10, on this measure. Speaker Panglinen, your recognition, subsection 51807.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a motion then to amend section 51807, and on line 16, you would strike the word limited and insert the word general, so that it becomes a general obligation of the government of Guam. And then on line 17, you would strike the word not, and you would, and it would read shall be deemed to be secured by the faith and credit of the government of Guam.
On the Speaker Panglinen amendment on page 10...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The full, and now the word full faith and credit.
The proposed amendment is on page 10, lines 16 and 17, to read stating that it is a, delete the word limited and replace it with general, general obligation of the government of Guam, and shall, delete the word not, shall be deemed to be secured by the incorporate the word full faith and credit of the government of Guam. On Speaker Panglinen's amendment to subsection 51807, no objections, sort of. Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. Please ensure that the legal counsel has the appropriate amendment. Vice Speaker Cruz, your recognition on subsection 51807.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I've circulated an amendment adding a new subsection C. Yesterday, when I asked the question, was there a requirement by the court order to have any certain interest rate as the maximum, I was told that there was not. And so utilizing the quarterly report of the receiver dated October 22nd that was filed in this case, wherein he did a study, or what I guess you guys were calling modeling, of a long-term financing bond with an average rate coupon of 6.021, and it's attached to the report and was the report that was used by, or referred to by GIDEA's general manager during the hearing last Monday, as being the interest rate that we should be looking at until they provided me with subsequent amounts. I'll be the good little soldier and accept the interest rate that the receiver submitted in his report and asked that my amendment be that said bond shall bear the interest at such fixed or variable rates or rates as may be negotiated by Magallanes Guam in the best interest of the Guam, of, of the government. Such interest rates shall not exceed the average coupon rate of 6.021 pursuant to the quarterly report of the receiver dated October 22nd, 2008.
On the proposed amendment to add a new subitem C to subsection 51807, that reads in accordance with what the vice speaker just alluded to. On that, on that note, on that amendment, Senator Cavill, your recognition.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I want to again congratulate the author of the amendment. Again, this amendment is to ensure that, that if a revenue bond or general obligation bond is, is passed, that we'll have an interest rate that would be, again, to the best interest of the rate payers, I mean, excuse me, of the, of the people of Guam, the taxpayers of Guam. Understanding that, you know, this has been a fluid situation over the past few days, and again, we've had a bill presented to us, presentations made by, by GIDEA representatives from the representative administration, statements made by, by bond counsel and financial advisors. Amendments were made a little bit earlier in this bill that dealt with securitization or collateralization or backstop of section 30 monies. With that, there was a concern about, about the price to pay for floating a bond, and again, with the, with the passage of a previous amendment, again, with near total confidence, of course, we're never totally confident about anything except for death and taxes, but aside from that, the, was a near, near 100% confidence level by those folks that we spend a lot of money to give us advice, that we aren't going to get the best rate from that amendment passed, or that amendment offered. Unfortunately, advice of, of, of the financial advisors was not taken by the majority of this body, and that amendment was passed. Now we have an amendment, and again, I, I want to congratulate the author. This is a very, boy, I tell you, 6.021%. We get this thing, man, I can't wait to get this bond floated. Now with that, I, I, obviously, we are in a fluid situation, and for every action, there's a reaction. And boy, I tell you, it's been dizzying these past two days because there's so many amendments. I'm confident that all these amendments made will make this an even stronger bill, I hope. But with that, with this particular amendment, this new amendment, maybe we can, I could get some advice from our financial advisors, or comments from our financial advisors, based on the current situation as a result of, of this amended bill that we have with us. Please give us your comments on, on this amendment and the likelihood of having this rate given, and of course, the viability, that word's a very nice word, viability, of moving forward in a bond indenture with, again, the provisions that were taken out in regards to security and collateralization in the prior, in yesterday's amendments, and then of course with this now, and now setting a 6.021 ceiling. So please, if I can get some advice from the experts here, Mr. Chairman, and I'm looking for one of the experts for that advice.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Do we have anyone to respond to that inquisition?
Just a general comment, I guess, is that there, there have been no non-investment grade transactions that have been publicly offered yet this year. So since, I don't know, the beginning, the second week, second or third week of December, maybe, I don't have a benchmark for what a bond, a general obligation bond at a B-plus rating for Guam would price that. I can tell you that when we tried to get the general obligation bond passed, or, I'm sorry, issued in December, $50 million with an 8% maximum rate, we were not able to do it at that time, because issues in the secondary market, so this is just bonds that are trading in the secondary market, were trading at 13 and 14%. You have a maximum rate of 8%, you can't compete with that, because buyers are going to go for the 13 and 14% bonds. And, and those are the challenges that lower-rated credits are facing these days. And issuers, even with, you know, A-rated credits, are, are still having trouble accessing the market.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that assessment, and just to give some context, again, for the investors who purchase non-investment grade credits, like this would be, and again, this would be a, a B-plus GO of the government, is when you move from an investment grade... when you move from an investment-grade rating, the buyer base for those securities is much more broad in terms of the depth of investors as compared to if you dip below that investment-grade threshold into the non-investment-grade realm, which is what this would be here. And you're really dealing with a handful of buyers, a much more limited base. A lot of those funds are the high-yield funds that I mentioned that were liquidating positions in December. And again, we're offering these bonds at rates of 13% and 14% in an effort to raise cash to satisfy these redemptions. Now, this was not too long ago. This was at the tail end of 2008. Again, the way the progression of how the market has thawed in 2009 is investors have migrated to the very strongest credits first. And so within the investment-grade realm, you're looking at AAA, AA, and again, as Ali had mentioned, you know, some of the A-rated issuers have been having issues with accessing the market. And if they have accessed the market, it has been at, you know, slightly higher rates than they're normally accustomed to seeing. And I think, as she had also mentioned, there's been very thin, if any, offerings of non-investment-grade credits so far to date. And so, you know, that's basically an assessment, I think, where we are today in terms of, you know, the market.
Again, yesterday, if I can follow up, and I'll close it. Yesterday, we were very concerned in the language about viable. And we understand what viable means, you know, but with viability, it also means, you know, there is someone that will buy, but someone or something will buy at a certain interest rate. Now, but again, there's a strong probability of viability, and that's where some of our colleagues, how they were guided when they voted on the amendment yesterday. My concern now is for this particular amendment, if added on, based on the reality of the current world economic situation, the situation with investors, could this potentially be some language that would make things very, very clear? It's not even viable in terms of what percentage point, but to be quite frank, non-viability. Is there a potential for that?
Just to clarify...
And I'm talking about non-viability, you know, no one's going to buy.
Yeah, and just to clarify, when you mean non-viability, it would basically be the B-plus GO of the government in today's marketplace.
Exactly, and of course, I understand which we are. You know, we're not going to get any higher credit rating based on the current language that we have. That was the reasons why you folks wanted some of that backstop there with section 30. It's not there. Now with it, again, my concern is, does this particular amendment make things, at this point, based on our current credit rating, does this have the potential for rendering any borrowing based on this language, non-viable?
In the current market, that is correct. That market...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Carvalho. On the proposed amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'll be pretty brief because I think some of the points are already made. So I think when the section 30 was removed, it basically was DOA. This bill is pretty much dead. Because that section 30 that you talked about being a backstop is gone. And that was the only thing, I think, if I recall correctly, and this I completely didn't understand, but that was the main crux of backing this. This is the coffin that's going to carry the bill because I think at 6%, where there's no way that the market is going to buy that. Would you agree with that, Ali?
In this market, yes.
Okay, no, we're talking about current day. We're not talking about, you know, like, two years from now, right? So in the current market, you mean the current market within now to how long do you think?
I can't say. I mean, I think you can, I can say that there are double-A rated credits out there now that are trying to access the market at higher interest rates than 6%.
Right. Did you also receive an email from Mr. Manning with regards to this, saying that he would basically indicate that this is not a viable alternative in the current bill, considering the removal of section 30?
I have a copy of it right here. I did not receive the email earlier, though.
Okay. And with respect to that, that already pretty much said, this bill is not viable as a viable alternative for funding. So in the middle paragraph, do you see that? Do you agree with that?
If, you know, if viable means, in today's market, you're able to sell this at 6%, then yes, I think that this is not viable.
Is it viable for me to go get a 1% refinancing on my home mortgage?
No, but that would be great.
How about 2%?
Still possible.
I can tell the bank all day long that I want to have the lowest possible rate, but I can't tell it what an unrealistic rate. Do you agree?
Yes.
Do you think the 6% or thereabouts is unrealistic?
For a general obligation rated B+, yes.
In this market?
Yes.
Or in the market in the foreseeable future?
Yes.
Is 9% closer to what's realistic?
I think you have a better chance at 9%.
What would be the cap that you would put? Because, you know, you're our advisor. You tell us what's a reasonable cap. So you tell me what we should, as a policy statement, tell the market that we should cap at.
Really, it is a policy decision?
No, but what's realistic? I'm asking about realistic. I want to be real here because, you know, it seems to me some people are, I don't know, not. But what is real to you? You're a financial advisor. You tell me what's a cap that's realistic, because I don't think 6% is in close. It's not even half there.
With a general obligation, in keeping in mind that there is a finite timeline to meet for this, for these bonds, I would say double that, 12%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. On the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Taitugue, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Speaker Wampat, I was asked if you were raising your secondary hand. Senator Taitugue, on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ali, I have a question. Last week, when we spoke at Getka, the meeting there, or GIDEA, I'm sorry, we talked about a triple-B rating at that point. And then just the other day, we had a document, or a piece of paper, showing that now we are, the insurers are out there looking at us as a triple-B rating now. Correct?
We discussed...
I mean, AAA, but correct?
The financing strategy assumed that we would have a section 30 pledge so that we could obtain a triple-B level rating. And we also have potential interest from one insurer who is, who has a AAA rating from SMP.
Okay, so it's already showing, if, the way it looks, it's already showing that the market is starting to get a little bit better for us to even grab a potential offer of an insurer, ready to insure us at AAA rating. Is that correct?
The insurer was only interested in the section 30 pledge.
Okay, but wasn't section 30 originally put in the first initiative to investors out there to ask for an insurer? Wasn't that really opt for the section 30 out on the bond last week? It was included, right, when we got the triple-B rating, right?
No, no, no. We have not marked, well, we have not marketed these bonds. We have, we are working with a financing strategy that has been approved by the court to, and we assumed that we would, you know, move forward with a section 30 pledge. And with that, preliminary conversations have occurred in the last, I don't know, month or two with both rating agencies and an insurer. And that was assuming the section 30 pledge security, not a general obligation pledge.
Okay, so the triple-B rating and that percentage of 9% was based on a general obligation bond only?
No.
No? Section 30?
Yes.
Okay, and then now, yesterday, we had something with section 30 money in it, right? Again, I mean, using section 30 money as a pledge and getting a AAA rating?
The bill...
On the insurer, and the insurer was ready to do it. Probability was good that you mentioned on the document, AAA, correct?
Yes.
So with that change, with that change, I just want to get to a point, is the market starting to get better? Because that was a big change from Friday to yesterday.
Yeah, there, the previous form of the bill, as submitted by the governor, allowed for the opportunity to achieve an investment-grade rating and potential insurance on the bonds, the AAA-rated insurance. The AAA bond insurer is not going to be interested in a B-plus general obligation pledge.
Okay, then I misunderstood the document that was given to me yesterday, concluding that it was starting to get a little bit better. Now, as Senator Tenorio mentioned, that you mentioned in the future, you don't see anything getting better at this point as of today. Because I know that you guys look at the market, the stock and everything, every day. Are you seeing a change happening right now?
We are seeing progress, but it is mostly for the higher-rated credits. So A and above, so just add on the As and, and they're, you know, the issuers that are rated A, AA, or AAA are getting market access. The issuers that are rated below that are having trouble. And the issuers that are rated, sorry, double-B plus and below are not able to access the market.
And right now, we are at B?
Single B, single B plus, which is...
Without the section 30?
Correct.
Okay. Yield to the author of the bill, please. Senator Cruz, my question was with regards to this bond, if placed in here and it goes nowhere in trying to get a loan for this, for this cost, if it doesn't go through, what are we going to do to pay? How are we going to pay for this if it doesn't ever go through?
I think, before I answer that question, I'll ask Ali. If I put it, if I left 9% in this bill, would you float this by March the 1st?
If there's a buyer at...
Would you float it by March the 1st?
If there's a buyer at 9% or less?
Do you have a buyer at 9% or less with the current rating that we have, even if we have the section 30 backing?
No.
I'm sorry, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Taitugue has the floor.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Well, no, that's what I'm trying to explain to her. She wants a guarantee that it's going to happen. And I'm telling, I'm trying to get the answer through the bond counsel, that there are no guarantees in this.
But it's obvious that at 6%, there's definitely no guarantee at all.
But at 9%, they're not saying it's going to happen either.
The probability...
She told you that if you wanted it...
Please, Vice Speaker Cruz, please.
Mr. Chairman, it's 12%. Ali, is it, if we had 12% or 15% with this float?
By next week? No, at any percentage, you can't float this bond by next week. There's no, there are no bond documents. There's nothing in place for us to move forward. There's, you know, if you pass legislation tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to market the bonds in a week's time.
Right, point of information.
Speaker Panglinen, please state your point of information.
The deadline of March 1st is for the passage of the authorization.
Yeah.
You know, so conceivably, we could put it at 6%, pass it, we meet the deadline of passing it, then we have to pass another test of, is it viable? And that could be debated, and that's for the court to make. Then we could float it two years from now. But, you know, we know that there, it has to be floated to meet the timelines of the consent decree projects, but the bonds don't have to be sold by March 1st.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen, for that point of information. Senator Taitugue has the floor.
That's true, but I'm just worried about, if we put this into the bill and pass this amendment, then there's, and we can't get this through at all, regardless if it's at 6%. I mean, 6% is really, really low. I mean, it's very difficult to get this, and then our hands are tied, and then we, how are we going to pay for this? That was my question, you know? How are we going to pay for this if the bond doesn't even go, even at 7%, 8% if we put this in? Is there an amendment that we can put in there in the event that we can revisit this and test the market out for something that's more realistic?
You can make the amendment to change it from 6 to 12, as was told to you by bond counsel. If you're ready to make that amendment, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Taitugue. On the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, also just for the information of the body, I understand the receiver is on the premises, so if any of you would like to inquire with him and converse with him, then I understand he's made himself available. Vice Senator Speaker Panglinen, on the amendment, please.
Thank you very much. You know, I think that the amendment, of course, as offered, is not out of thin air. I think that the good author of the amendment has relied on representations made by individuals that the court is relying on. And, you know, it would, the question could be, if the court issued the order based upon the information given to her by the receiver, and we take that information and go back to the court with it, is the court going to reject it now because it's coming from us, coming via us rather than via directly from the receiver? And what's the court's basis for saying, when you tell me "is," then it's spelled "I-S"? When the legislature takes your statement and says, on November 29th, the receiver said "is" is spelled "I-S," and court, do you want, you want to know how "is" is spelled? According to the receiver on page, on November 29th, "is" is spelled "I-S," is the court going to say, no, it's not? I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
You know? And so the courts, I mean, it's the court that's going to have to, whether accept, if they accepted that information that was provided to them and based their decision on that, if we take that same information and act on it, is the court now going to reject the information that she accepted when it came from the receiver? That's going to be up to the court. And I think that that's the genesis, and I hope, for me, that's what I'm going to assign how, why this is presented. And to me, it's a valid representation. And then the court's going to, or the receiver's going to have to explain to the court, oh no, back then it was valid, markets changed, whatever. But it's going to be up to the court. Just for the information again, once again, on December 28th of 2008, when the markets were really bad, somebody was feeling very generous. Because the Government Development Bank of Puerto Rico sold 1.3 billion in bonds to local investors, double the amount initially expected. The agency assigned the notes in Tuesday's sale at triple-B, two notches above junk bonds. Of the total sold Tuesday, more than 835 million of the bonds were purchased by retail investors, and the remaining 395 million by institutional investors. Now, here's the difference. The short-term notes, which were due on 2012, were at 5.5%, while the longer-term notes, which are due on 2019, have a yield of 6.5%. UBS acted as lead manager along with Popular Securities and Standard Securities on the issue. December 23rd, market was bad. If you look at the market statistics based upon that, this probably was not reflected as a positive inflow of that into municipal securities. Yet, in that really bad environment, something happened. So it goes to show, things can happen. Now, you know, and the distinguishing thing on this is sale, is that it's short-term notes. It's issued by the Government Development Bank of Puerto Rico, but the bonds themselves were rated triple-B. So in a time when the market was really bad, and we knew that, you know, that the windows were 20-minute windows or one-day windows versus one-week windows, somebody decided, some investor decided that they were going to buy 1.23 billion dollars' worth of Puerto Rico bonds at these rates. So I'm sure, at that time, when they were debating this, somebody was told, it's not viable. This is a bad market. You can't sell it. And somebody decided, let's go try. And they found that they were able to. And as a matter of fact, it was double, the subscription was double the amount that they expected. So I understand, and I fully rely on the analysis and the opinions given to me by our financial advisors and their underwriters. It's hard. It's not going to be easy. And there is no guarantee of success. And if we were going to assign probability ratings, you know, from a statistical point, it may be 0, it may be 10, it may be 10... it may be 0, it may be 10, it may be 20, you know, and what are we going to rely on? But again, the only reason why I bring this up is, things can happen. Likely, unlikely, probable, it's the difference between probable and possible, you know? And I don't doubt any of the opinions that are being given to me, but somewhere along the line, somebody took a risk. And again, are we going to risk it? You know? Is the judge going to decide that anything we do under 9% is not viable? Or is she going to wait and say, all right, they authorize one at 6, or maybe at 7, or maybe at 8, or maybe at 9, they authorize that. Before I decide whether that's viable or not, maybe I'll wait till they go to the market and try. And when they can't, then I would say, well, it was not viable, start giving me the $1 million a week. I don't know. I don't know what the judge is going to do. And for me, I'm not sure what I'm going to do on this amendment, because I'm trying to read the judge's mind. I'm trying to read, I already know what the receiver's mind is. The receiver's already very clearly said, a general obligation pledge, full faith and credit is not viable. I don't believe that. I disagree with that. You know? My financial advisors don't agree with that. And that's who I'm going to rely on. Is the judge going to listen to us? I don't know. I'm hoping that the judge will listen to our, give some credence and some weight to the statements that they're making. And they're saying, hey, Judge, you know, full faith and credit of the general fund, 8%, it's worth a try, you know? Because look what happened to Puerto Rico back in 23rd of just last, a month and a half ago, you know? 6.5%? Yeah, it's a 10-year note, you know, and yeah, we're going to go out with a 7 and a 30, but we could structure the thing, you know? That's the thing. We could do these things in series, as the judge has given us the authority to do. And we could go out for initial issue of a 10-year note and say, hey, we'll do the, we'll do a 7 and a 10-year, and we'll do an 8 on the 30-year, or, you know, or the next series. I mean, these guys can get creative. On the positive side, because some of them got creative on the negative side, and we're in this whole mess now. But they can get creative on the positive side. I've seen them do it. And I trust that they're going to get creative on the positive side for our benefit. That's why we hired them. That's why Greta chose them, you know, and that's why I'm listening to their advice. So I don't know about 6, but, you know, maybe somewhere in between. But I do know why the amendment's presented, and it's not out of thin air. There's a reason, a rationale, a source of the information, a source of the information that fortunately for the amendment was accepted by the judge as being a basis for making her decisions. So who knows what the judge is going to think? But I know that the information is not just to make Senator Carville get a little bit I do know that it was based, again, on representations made to the court, which have been accepted in the past by the court.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. On the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Rector, you're recognized.
You know, I keep going back to this over the last few days, and actually, over the last week. Ollie, like, once again, people have already covered a lot of this territory with you, but really, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. Right? I mean, basically, if we floated this and we put it in here 20%, you couldn't sell it tomorrow. I mean, assuming we had all the ducks in a row, right?
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I can't say for sure.
Yeah.
There's always a buyer at some price. There's always a buyer at some price.
Or you think so, huh? So you suggest we put 20, and we're guaranteed to sell it? No, see, you can't even say that. It's, okay, I just wanted to make sure on that, because sometimes we talk to things like they're facts, and like, really, once again, this market is unlike any market anybody has ever seen in their lifetime, and even has a clue what's going to happen. No matter what we do, things beyond our control are going to choose our fate in whether we're able to float this bond, no matter what the interest rate is. So I just kind of wanted to make that clear and verify one more time, that 6, 8, 10, 20?
This is, it's a policy decision, and the policy should be set at a rate, it's a maximum rate. It's up to the rate. The policy should be set, and is normally typically set in jurisdictions, at the maximum rate at which you think you would be able to increase the likelihood of meeting your goals with the actual financing. So it really is a policy decision, as previously passed by the last legislature for the general obligation bonds, that maximum rate is 8%. So just as an example.
So in order for this legislature, the 30th, to be consistent with the policy set by the 29th, we would go with 8, because that's what they set in the last one, right?
I think at a minimum, if you're going to authorize general obligation bonds, it should be on par with the general obligation bonds that you've previously authorized and have issued. I mean, at a minimum.
Well, now, what if, that leads me to another question, then. What if we authorized this general obligation bond at 9? Would it sell before, I mean, there's a chance that it would sell before and undercut our ability to sell the other obligation bonds at 8?
I, well, Bond Council has given an opinion that because this author, those bonds have not been sold yet, because this authorization, and I think the authorization of those bonds stipulates a certain priority of payment from the general obligation bond issuance. I think since this legislation would be passed after that authorization, with no further clarification, those bonds, or the proceeds of these bonds would pay this project after those other bonds are floated and pay, and those projects are paid. They're the same, I mean, it's the same source and security of payment. They're all general obligation bonds. But you're saying, at the 9% interest rate, would be able, would this financing be able to move faster than the other financing?
Correct. That's my question.
I mean, I don't know. I don't think so, but I think the priority is that the 246 authorization, since it's already authorized, is moving forward. I mean, it's ready to go to market. It did go to market in December. We have all the documents put in place. I think you're looking at at least 60, you know, 45 to 60-day timeline at the very least for this financing, depending on, you know, the final covenants, et cetera, to get this financing up to that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Uspishio, on the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just so everybody is reminded and it's clear, there's some basis to which the author of this amendment is moving this amendment. And if this amendment does not pass, I think from what some of us have been saying, myself included, is I don't think the people of Guam should shoulder a bond financing to the rate of 9%. I mean, we all know that this is just an expensive way to solve our solid waste crisis, and there are other alternatives. The Guam Economic Development Authority, I just, I believe the RFI closed today at noon. Yeah, and so while there's a mad rush to want to comply with the consent decree, and I think that's what we all want to do, we all, we all want to prevent the judge from continuing her heavy hand and ordering this $1 million a week payout, but we can't be blinded by the fact that there are other alternatives out there, whatever those alternatives may be. Nobody in the administration seems to question the fact that in February 05 of 2006, DPW's estimates for the La John site to include both the landfill cost and the road construction was about 60.7 million. And in December 2008, the receiver for the same site is estimating this to be $140 million. And so all of a sudden, the burden is placed on the people of Guam, on this legislature, to want to move forward and commit borrowing up to 9%. I continue to challenge the administration for not challenging these numbers. And on one hand, you're saying, let's go with everything the receiver says is possible and necessary in order to meet the court's timelines. So there's a basis by which this amendment is being offered, on the basis that by his own admission, by his own report, on October 22 of 2008, to the chief judge, he says that he could secure a bond at average coupon rate of 6.6%, 6.021%. So all of a sudden, we're saying, oh, let's be a little cautious here, and let's make it, I don't know who chose 9%, but even the Bank of America Securities are saying that 9% is probably not doable, it's probably more like 12%. Ollie?
The 9% number was recommended maximum up to the 9% threshold for a BBB or higher-rated credit, because in the original bill, we were contemplating a Section 30 pledge. I think we're talking about something different now, because we're talking about the general obligation, which is rated single B+, and that right now, there's no market for that. So I don't know if that clarifies your...
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. But even, even based on the bill as introduced, that kind of setup and that kind of pledge as Section 30 is a backstop, it's a far, I mean, it's not, it's not easily attainable, but it's, it's also, it's highly unlikely that it could be floated, right? In the present market conditions?
Today or next week? I think so, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, you know, we're going with a lot of uncertainties, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, for me, there's always got to be a basis by which we move in a particular direction. And I'm saying that the basis for the reduction of the interest rate is really based on the receiver's own report to the judge. So let's just, let's just adopt his recommendations in this instance, and try to, and try to save a lot of money. From 6% versus 9% is a significant interest cost over a 30-year period, so I rise in full support of this amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Uspishio. On the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, any further discussion? Senator Espada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the last speaker, and even this amendment, basically points to, you know, the interest rate that was basically proffered by the receiver. The receiver's here right now. The other stuff, I mean, the other issue we need to contend with is that, you know, market conditions have changed since October. I mean, they're vastly different back then than what they are now. I think it's since we are addressing the receiver's numbers, that we should only bring him in, since he's right outside our door, to bring him into the session hall and perhaps get his input on this. So I move again that we bring the receiver in, since he's right next door, and it's going to take maybe about 10 seconds for him to walk into this room. So I make that motion, Mr. Chair, to have the receiver come in and answer some questions.
There's a motion to reconsider the decision of the body.
Point of order, oh, it's a reconsideration motion?
Yes, there's a motion that's being proposed to reconsider the previous decision of the body. And I understand there's some objections. Please be very mindful that the chair has recognized, and certainly has extended the appreciation of the receiver making himself available, and also recognized and highlighted that, in fact, he was on the premises previously. So if any of our colleagues would like to bend his ear on an individual basis or as a group, then certainly he's made himself available. There is a motion, but let's entertain the reconsideration of the previous question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. This is, six, motion fails. On the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Espada, are you done?
I just want to go ahead and, for the record, state that I'm object to this amendment, with all due respect to the mover of the amendment, because again, now it seems like we're not even serious about trying to move this bill forward. Bottom line. Now we're just tinkering around, knowing full well the market conditions that are out there. You know, for whatever reasons, they think that the six points, the people who support, my colleagues who support this amendment, think that 6.021% would be viable, potentially viable, in front of the court's eyes, I think is unrealistic. And so as a basis for that, and the best interest of moving forward, and at the risk of perhaps having that $1 million a week come to reality in about 12, 11 days, I have to definitely object to this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Any further discussion on the amendment by Vice Speaker Cruz? Vice Speaker Cruz, if you would like to close on your amendment, please.
I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a few more questions of our financial advisors, so that we can get a few facts clear. I'm sure that you can remember the day and the date and the time that the market failed, I mean, crashed. Would, because I'm sure some of you lost friends that day. What date was that?
I think it was September 17th, 2008.
September 17th?
I'm just checking my calendar. Sorry. I'm checking my calendar. Hold on.
No, I'm sure you were correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I, I probably, wait, September 20, I'm sorry, September 22nd.
September 22nd. And the reason why I ask that, Mr. Chairman, is I'm holding in my hand a document that was filed, the Quarterly Report of the Receiver dated October 22nd, 2008, presented to Chief Judge Francis Tidinko-Gatewood, U.S. District Court of Guam by GBB. In it, there is a report prepared October 27th, I mean, no, October 7th, 2008, which would be a good two weeks after the market fell, at 5:49 PM, prepared by Public Financial Management Incorporated, and is included in this report to the court. And in it, the Public Financial Management, Inc., and GBB presented to the court, the need to have a bond floated for 160, $159 million, and they used, as the percentage rate, and I'm reading again from page 2 of that report, average coupon 6.021%, which is where I got that amount. I did, you know, it wasn't pulled out of thin air, it was pulled from whole cloth. And the only reason why I want to point this out, Mr. Chairman, is because of the fact that I've asked the Attorney General to present to the court the argument of force majeure. Ollie, several people have asked you, has anyone currently working on Wall Street ever seen a financial market like this?
Based on testimonies of people that I work with, I mean, I can't tell you if anyone working on Wall Street has, but based on testimonies from people that have been in the business for a long time, no.
And the market is such that the United States is not the only one that's suffering this financial crisis, is it?
That's correct.
In fact, there are some scenarios out there by economists that are saying, are predicting that some Western economies, including some Western European countries, may fail as a result of this financial crises.
That's correct.
And in fact, California, which has, if I'm not mistaken, the eighth-largest economy in the world, is now near bankruptcy, and day before yesterday announced the, this layoff of 20,000 state employees. And they're in, in a deficit of at least $42 billion. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think they're like the sixth-largest economy.
Six. That's even better.
Something like that, right.
Yeah, it's up there. It's right behind our sales rusher and Japan. And even Japan, at this point the other day, is continuing to slide downward faster than a skier down a Black Point lift.
That's what I heard.
We're all going, but the thing is, is that it's not so much that we're being unreasonable. It is the fact that the court is being unreasonable in this scenario. it is the fact that the court is being unreasonable in this, in this scenario. Unless the air in that building is completely rarefied, or they're inhaling methane gas, they've got to realize that this entire world is in this major financial crises. It's not that we don't want to do this. It's that the market is such that the combination of both of them, and their, and the hundreds and thousands of employees that they have, they can't tell us exactly how soon we can float a bond at our current market, at our current rating, and at what percent. Sometime soon. But the thing is, is that this unreasonable judge has demanded that we come up with some kind of a plan that, that, that has to be in by, within the next 10 days. And I just keep trying to get the government to understand. One other thing, Ali, before September the 17th, there was a local statute that had, I mean, December 22nd, when the market fell, there was a previous, what do you call it? Law, public law by the, by the Guam Legislature, to float 149 million dollars in, in bonds, was there not?
The general obligation bonds?
Yes.
It was net proceeds of 246 million.
Two hundred, that, that was the combination when, I think Senator Pangolinan added the additional 100.
I don't remember the time.
But prior to that, just for the COLA, there, wasn't there just for the COLA, a, a one, one earlier than, than September?
115 million in the prior budget, I think.
Right, 115. But between October 2007 and October 2008, or September 2008, when the market fell, you weren't able to float that GO bond, were you?
That particular one, no.
It was either you couldn't, was it you couldn't float it, or you had been told not to float it?
We had not gone to the rating agencies to approve that general obligation bond issue, that specific one.
Why not?
A variety of reasons, I think, that the, the main one being that it is, it was intended to be a deficit reduction bond, or deficit elimination bond, part of a overall deficit elimination plan, which we needed to present in, you know, in a holistic manner to the, to the rating agencies, I think.
But that would have improved our, our rating, wouldn't it, would it not, if we had paid down 147 or 157 million in?
Well, we had to, we had to prove that, one, we were going to be able to pay for it, and, two, that we were not going to, in the future, incur future deficits.
And so is there anything different between then and now that would make it, make us more attractive to any market whatsoever?
That would, that would make us more attractive?
Right, to be able to float a, a bond of any kind.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I answered, I understand.
Has our, has our revenue collection improved dramatically, so that we are now more attractive as a, as a, as a source of a municipal bond?
I probably would want Bertha to verify that, but I think that GRT revenue has, has increased during that time, and there has been some progress on the military buildup and deficit reduction.
But in, in the last two years, you're also aware that, though you, you say that there was some movement in the military buildup, our section 30 money has actually gone down in the last two years, hasn't it?
That's correct.
So I'm, what I'm trying to get to, and get the people in the, in the public to understand, is that I'm utilizing what was presented to the court, when she was convinced by the, by GBB, the receiver, that a bond was possible, and a bond was possible that could be floated, and is the, is the way that this should be, be done. In fact, in December, we were told, if you don't get the bond out, then we want $20 million by January the 1st. That was the reason why we had to get the first loan. So I'm just saying, I'm trying to get the people to understand that I have been trying to convince everyone, the Attorney General included, and the, and the governor, that the situation in the world isn't, is like nothing anybody has ever been, has ever seen, and that the argument of force majeure has got to be the main argument that we present to the court. I understand, but it was, it was like all of about three paragraphs in, in the presentation, and I'm saying, that's what it should have been singularly, that, forget this report that your receiver provided you, there is no market, there is no market at any rate. There might be at, at, at some, you know, exorbitant interest rate, but I, as a public elected official, I even have a hard, I would have a hard time between a 6 and a 9%. There's a $200,000 difference in interest payments in that. And the example that I, this morning, I was late to the, here, to the start of this, Mr. Chairman, because I was meeting with a constituent in my office, who owns a, a car company on this island, and came in to register his objection to my putting out this bill for, to get the people to make a determination of whether or not they wanted a gross receipts tax increase, and came in to tell me that, that there's been a 36% drop in, in his business, and the fact that people are actually bringing their cars back and saying, I can no longer afford to, to pay for it, here's the car back. They're not even, they don't even need to pay a tow truck service to go out and repossess them. The people are actually driving their cars back into the dealership. And I, and I told him, I said, you know, I'm, all I'm trying to do, all I'm trying to do is try to get the judge to understand, one, she has no business in this case anymore, she should recuse herself, but absent that, that force majeure should be recognized, and that we cannot, and the market conditions are such that it's impossible. You know, and the example that I used to him, I said, you know, you're a, you're a car dealer, I could be some, you know, real proud parent and saying, son, you know, you're going to be a, a senior in high school, and I don't want the kids at school to tease you, I'm going to buy you a, a beautiful car. But unfortunately, my credit rating is 300. So the only place that I can possibly get a loan are at one of these, these loan shark places that are willing to give me a loan at 21, or 25, or 29%. Do I just run around and, and because his mother's screaming at me, going, honey, you've got to buy, you know, Junior a car, get him the car and take on this 25% interest loan, just so I can, I can get her to shut up and, and satisfy his, his ego that he's got this car? Or do I wait until I get my, my credit rating up high enough to a, to a 450, or 470, or even, and, and get a loan at the credit union for 8 or 6%? At some point, we've got to be realistic. You can't tell me that it's 9%. You guys have given me different numbers of how much it would cost us to float 20, I mean, 30 year, because of the difference that you're adding onto the top, whether it's 202 or 206, but I'm just saying, it just is difficult for me to get my hands around it, and all I can understand, and I explained to this man, I said, you know, I have no horse in this race. I have no immediate family living on this island, I have no children, and I have no grandchildren. So when I die, none of my children, I mean, because I have no children and no grandchildren, they're not going to be stuck with this for the next 30 years. When I die, I'm gone, and that's it. My sisters live in the States, and they're not going to be responsible for this. But I'm going to make a decision to stick your children and your grandchildren with a 30-year note at, at 9%? That's completely irresponsible, and is impeachable, as far as I'm concerned. And unless she comes off the third floor of that building and recognizes the real world, and, and I'll just float back to her the report that they used themselves, 6.021 is the coupon rate, see if you can float it. Because we can't float it at any other interest rate, and so I'm asking my colleagues, I, you know, it was made of whole cloth, I took it from the report that's filed in this, in this court case. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. On the Vice Speaker amendment, Vice Speaker Cruz, should your amendment pass, then the exhibit will be acknowledged as part of the amendment, as an attachment. On the Vice Speaker Cruz amendment, all those in favor, please signify by raising your Amendment fails. Colleagues, we will conclude our, our conversation, our discussion on subsection 51807 on page 10, but any other discussion, Senator Cavill, you're recognized. On that section, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I know, and again, this is relevant to this section, and also relevant to, to the amendment, that though it, though it failed, and I didn't vote for it, I, I, obviously, I'm in favor of trying to get the most favorable interest rates for the people of Guam, especially with these commitments that we have in regards to the, the environmental disaster that is ORDOT. Mr. Chairman, again, if you listen to the discussions that were made earlier by my colleagues, it's apparent that, again, looking at even at car sales, we can have a very good idea that the trending of this economy, it's, it's shaky. And, and with that, looking for certain trends that we could, that, that could be shown to potential investors, that our economy is rebounding, and that there, there is a strong likelihood that the, with the bill that is enacted today, or hopefully today or tomorrow, that we could receive favorable interest rates, and similar to, of course, what happened in, in Puerto Rico. Again, that's, that's an interesting and, and factoid for me as well, to see that there is, there is, oh, should I say this, there is hope. There, there is some hope that, that we could maybe, again, float a bond out that would be, again, would be favorable to the terms of, of, again, again, those that, both, how would you say? Well, it could be at an interest rate that would be acceptable for all of us. We don't want to incur more debt, but obviously, we, we can't do it out of cash flow. And we do it out of cash flow to, to close ORDOT and open a new landfill, again, $1 million a week, it's going to have some negative repercussions for the government of Guam and the people of Guam. So we're going to have to do something, and whether it's either a general obligation bond, or a leaseback, or PAB, which is still some sort of leveraging, some sort of capitalization, maybe not through the government, but through a private entity. But since we're in the, we're in the portion that deals with, deals with, with government indebtedness, and again, based on the, the testimony that was provided yesterday on the earlier amendment, and also based on the spirit of the, of the, the senator that offered the earlier amendment, I'm requesting to the body that, again, we want to try to get the most favorable interest rate. It was a stated fact that with section 30 monies in place, that would occur comparative to what we have now, and that's what I'd like to do, is move to reconsider the actions of the body, and go back to, to the page, page, page number four, and again, all references towards section 30, and allowing section 30 to be, again, a, a part of this bill, and used as either collateralization or a backstop, so that we can get the most favorable rates. And this is all in the spirit of trying to make this thing work out. So again, Mr. Chair and my colleagues, I know we all want to, to, to do what's best for the people of Guam, and if we have to use this option of borrowing, especially in these very unstable times, looking for some positive foundation, knowing full well, based on the statements made earlier by, by, again, our financial advisors, that the section 30 money would be that, that vehicle. This is something that we have control of. We don't have control of the world markets, but we, there are certain things that we do have control in. So again, Mr. Chair, in the spirit of, again, trying to make this bill workable, trying to hopefully get as close to 6% as we can, I'd like to move, move to reconsider the actions of the body, and, and to reverse the amendment that had been made in the prior day, in particular to, to section 30. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do not want to make, and by the way, I'm doing this in all...
Senator Cavill?
Comote, I'm, as, as the former speaker used to say. I'm trying to see how to, if we could try to reconsider our...
In trying to recognize, Senator Cavill, I apologize, in trying to recognize...
And I don't want anyone to get hot.
...your proposed motion for reconsideration, that will be entertained, but in terms of trying to incorporate, reincorporate a decision that was previously made by the body, as is applicable to the entire, is that your motion?
Yes, yes, very much, Mr. Mr. Chair, there was an amendment that passed yesterday, I object...
So we will, we will act on them separately, it's, I'm just looking at the subsection 51807, if in fact is applicable here, because that section 30 term on line 14 is no longer part of this particular subsection.
And, and that is, that is the problem, we need to make a motion to reconsider the action.
Absolutely. So on the motion to reconsider the decision of the body, on the consideration of the decision that was previously made in reference to section 30 funds, there's an objection. All those in favor of the reconsideration, the decision to reconsider, please signify by raising your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. On that note, yes, Speaker Pangolinan?
I just want to provide just maybe a point of information.
Please.
We're trying to save money on this, and we say we're going to save it if we use section 30. We're using section 30 on the general obligation, and if it's going to save us money here, wouldn't it save us money there anyway? And isn't it now all going to come out of the same pocket, so we're all going to save money? So whether we save money from the right pocket or the left pocket, if it's the pants of the people, then the people will be saving the money.
Thank you very much, Speaker Pangolinan, on your provision of information. On, we are, we have concluded discussion on subsection 51807 on page 10, we will initiate discussion on the subsequent session, section, first thing tomorrow morning at 0900, I'm sorry, 9:00 AM tomorrow morning, and we will commence with that. There's been, just for the information of the body, please, there's been a request by bond council representatives, as well as GITA representatives, to allow for the provision of the information and the action of the body to date, so that bond council can make the appropriate changes to be consistent with a general obligation bond henceforth, to also incorporate the decisions of this body thus far. So just for your information, that information will be provided with the assistance and the support of our legal counsel, as well as the clerk of the legislature. Other than that, the committee of the whole is recessed until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you.
And thank you to the administration official.